Two, Planning Commission meeting. Do roll call first?
Pledge.
Oh, just do the pledge first. I'm sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do roll call.
Member Aquindo provided an excuse for his absence this evening, so he will have an excused absence for the record, as well as Member Carney and Member Woolford. They all provided notice of their absence. Member Lantri?
Present.
Member Rivera?
Here.
Member Grigsby?
Present.
Member Douglas?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Jack Morgeson, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm the attorney for the Planning Commission. As our clerk has informed us, we don't have an acting chair as yet, so for tonight's meeting, we will need for the commission to nominate and vote an acting chairperson for tonight's meeting to go forward. We have a quorum, and everyone will be a voting and participating member of the commission. So, as the board's attorney, commission's attorney, I'll ask for a motion for tonight for acting chair.
I move that Phil Lantri act as chair for this evening's meeting.
And then call for a second.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chairman Lantri, it's your meeting.
All right. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting held on June 21st, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All that in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay. That's approved. Thank you.
Okay, new business. First item is Resolution Number 2022-159R, Mr. Hotlins LLC Conditional Use, DRC Case Is the applicant present?
He's not.
Hello?
Hi. Good evening, commission members. My name is Tammy Recky, and I'm the Associate Planner in the Community Development. So I'll be presenting three conditional uses tonight for mobile food dispensing vehicles, or food trucks. So the first case on the agenda is Mr. Hotlins. The food truck is located on 718 13th Street in St. Cloud. So the property is on highway business, and the future land use is commercial. Food trucks are only permissible in the highway business district through a conditional use, and there will be no adverse impacts on city facilities. So on the future land use map, we can observe that the commercial is the future land use, and it is contiguous north, south, east, and west of the property. And in our zoning map, it shows that all parcels adjacent to that property are zone highway business as well. This application, or this request, meets the intent of the strategic plan goals of growth management and economic development. And our staff reviewed this request for a conditional use on or before May 27, 2022. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 2022-159R for conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the Land Development Code. Our approval is conditional to comply with the city's mobile food dispensing vehicle guidelines that the applicants was provided to during the application. And he was informed of the meeting tonight, but is not present, so available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just for the commission, just to review, for these first three matters on the agenda are dealing with the conditional use. In each of the cases, before you'll see that the Land Development Code for the Planning Commission sets out the roadmap for you all to consider those six factual matters and consider those in connection with the application. So those will be the six subject matters, if you will, in relation to the application. And the Land Development Code requires an affirmative finding of each of those as posed if the conditional use is to be granted. The commission has the right to put any appropriate safeguards or conditions on any such conditional use if the commission wishes to find in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for the city staff?
Is this located in the gas station area of, isn't there a gas station there?
Yes.
Levy Liquor?
Mm-hmm.
So it's out of that parking lot area?
Yeah, it's in that parking lot.
Is a permanent food trucks going to be there every day, or is it temporary?
Yes, so they, this food truck runs Monday to Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Does anyone on the commission have any conditions that they would like to ask for on approval?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just as a suggestion, the applicant is not here, as I understand, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes. For that case specifically?
The applicant is not here. Certainly, staff is here, and then there may be people from the public that wish to speak before the commission gets into a discussion in consideration of the...
Yeah, so at this time, we'll allow for public comment. Does anybody have any comments on this agenda item?
And in relation, if anyone has any public comment on any of the agenda items, please fill out one of these forms and provide it to me before you speak. And if you do approach the podium, just state your name and address for the record.
It appears that we have no public comment, so if we do not, we will close the public comment session at this time. And, commission, does anybody have any further questions or discussion? And then at this time, I would call for a motion to approve...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, but prior to the commission making any motion, as the commission wishes, I just want to remind the commission on this item that the recommendation from the staff was that there would be some conditions to be contemplated if the commission was inclined to approve the application. Those are found on your Page 5, at least I believe it is 5, of your report. There are nine listed conditions, and I would just want to make sure that you all saw those that were listed in the report for consideration.
Can staff explain those a little bit more? What is your biggest concern on these five?
Yes. So, let me just open for reference. So at the beginning of the year, the staff put together a guide for mobile food dispensing vehicles, and these are just the conditions that it was determined at that time that in order to approve food trucks in the city, in order to be something positive for the community, that these conditions would be required. So when the applicant submitted their conditional use application, they reviewed the conditions, and they initialed by them, so they are all aware that those are the things that they need to comply with in order to operate a food truck. So these conditions are just an effort to minimize any negative impact that they may have, and also to allow them to pursue their business.
Let me ask about condition number, let's see, number three. It says there shall never be more than one MFDB onsite at a time.
Correct.
But there may be, and there's a limit of two active MFDB business tax receipts on the property at any given time.
Yes.
So what would establish essentially which one of those two tax receipts could be onsite at any given time? So I mean, is it like whoever shows up first? Or do they have some sort of agreement with the property owner?
Yes.
Where's that coming from?
So the conditional uses, they are given to the location and not to the specific business. So in order to reflect that, we wanted to make sure that, to provide more opportunity for the food trucks and not to have them spread, you know, all over the highway business that we would allow to, to share the same location as long as they operate in alternate business hours. So that's what those two items mean. So the number two would allow up to two food trucks to be associated with the same property. And then number three is just saying that like if they are associated with the same property, they're not operating at the same time. So one could come in the morning, one can come in the evening, as long as they're inside that, the time that is allowed for them to be in the property. So that will be captured as they apply for a business license. They have to submit an owner authorization form. So in that document, it would reflect that the owner is aware of which hours they'll be operating in that location, and we would know that if they are two applying for the same location, that they're not operating at the same time.
But right now, there's only one that's applied for this location. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's only one. We just made that, like I said, because this conditional use is not for that business specifically, but for the property, we wanted to put this condition there so the, you know, the owner of the property didn't feel like he could have, you know, as many food trucks as, you know, desires, but so there's limitation.
And so the conditional uses are really just kind of things they have to be aware of. It's not like they have to do, they can't do some of these things until they're up and operating. So it's as long as they comply with these nine items.
I think I can answer that for commission. Obviously, the conditions, if they are adopted by the commission and ultimately City Council, that becomes part of the conditional use. And if there's a deviation from a condition, then that becomes a zoning violation, and code enforcement becomes involved. And that can affect, really most significantly, the property owner, because, you know, the vendors are moment to moment or day to day, but the property owner would be the one that would be affected by any condition not met with these, if they were adopted by the commission, by the City Council.
Okay, so individually, each one of these maybe that we will see may have these conditions, or it sounded like these are the conditions that will be on all mobile food dispensing vehicles.
These are the conditions that are being recommended by staff, conceptually, if the commission is in favor of allowing the property owner to allow this mobile food dispensary with a conditional use. They're in support, their reports is they're in support of meeting the factors, but with conditions, and the conditions are listed out. That the first condition is that the use obviously run with the property, that the property owner is in agreement with it, it runs with the land, it's not intended, the conditional use is not intended to be attached to a mobile food dispensary entity who can move from location to location, it stays with the property. Okay?
Right, right.
And then limit to two active tax receipts at that property, as staff has indicated, so that if there's an interest in having different dispensaries at different times of the day, up to two, but only one onsite at a time is another condition. And then, and then the other conditions that follow, with the outdoor seating and such being prohibited, operating hours not being operated after, or between rather, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., et cetera.
So the site plan is really just this location, there's not really anything more than that, correct?
Yeah. Well, the site plan is where the food trucks should be parked, to be in compliance.
And there was one more, hold on. Okay, and signage, they can't advertise anything or have any like crazy men flocking around, or signs on the highway or whatever, it's only a menu sign and their truck.
Exactly.
Attached to the...
Now...
Attached to the truck.
Are these nine conditions, these are new? Or are these sort of re...
The recommended conditions for the...
Well, I understand they're recommended, but are these new, or have they been recommended in the past for other cases?
Yes. So these are the first three cases that are going through, all the processes should be approved. So the, all these conditions came from the MFDB guide that the city put together at the beginning of the year. So when they apply for the conditional use, they reviewed all the conditions, and they initialed by it, saying that they were aware that if they wanted to operate their food trucks, those would be things required. So that's been the process that we're using since the beginning of this year, and these are the first cases that are going through the process, the complete process.
They'll take the pain for everyone else.
Yeah, so one condition of the limit of one at a time, would that be only imposed on this particular property?
It would be on all properties, because all of these properties that are being approved for them to be able to comply with all the zoning requirements of meeting the required setbacks for highway business, a couple of these food trucks, they're parking in excess parking for that property, because we don't want them to take up, you know, the necessary parking for those establishments. They can only park if there is excess parking according to the Land Development Code. So that's why most of, in most cases, the properties would only allow one at a time. So for example, Mr. Hotlins has taken up, I think, one or two parking spaces, and that's what that property has for excess parking. So it's not like another food truck could be parked there at the same time, because that would take up the required parking...
No, I understand that, but the reason I'm bringing this up is because some other properties may have more space.
I think, and I understand, but I think that it will be helpful for the commission that this particular property be the one that be focused upon with regard to this application. I would encourage the commission to steer clear of drawing in other properties that are not at issue, at least at this time.
Understood.
They could possibly take another anomaly, or a different condition for that one.
The commission has, the Land Development Code gives the commission, you know, the leeway to impose appropriate safeguards and conditions on a case-by-case basis that you can recommend onto the council. And so a different type of property with a different type of...
Parking.
Setup, as it were, may create a situation different from the things that we're going to see here tonight. So that's why we just...
Yeah, so we should suggest that condition, and that each property be looked at individually on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, well, right. I think that that's implicit, but sure.
If I may address the board?
Sure.
Doug Murray, City Garden Planner and Manager. Just to bring some background of why we are where we are, as some of you may recall, in the beginning of, towards the end of last year, or the previous year, the legislation passed a bill that any municipalities could not prohibit, totally prohibit, food trucks or vehicles, food dispensing vehicles. The city never had an ordinance addressing this. So when we had a request at the beginning of this year, and it made it to the Planning Commission Board, we have to deny the recommendation, because we, by not having any ordinance or any ways to implement it, it was prohibit use. Since then, staff has been working with the City Council, and has been working with some of the applicants, believe that initially were seven of them, that they wanted to open into the city. And staff created a guide, and the guide had some criteria and some instructions of how one might qualify to be a conditional use in these locations. Since then, the staff also amended the Land Development Code to add this type of business into the city as a conditional use only on the highway businesses. So the conditional use request is individually analyzed per property. If it requires further conditions, the staff will recommend further conditions. But those nine conditions are the conditions that in order to operate your conditional use, you have to meet. If the board would wish to add any additional comments, absolutely, you can do so. But yeah, each case is reviewed individually, but in every case, all nine would apply. And like Ms. Rocky said in the presentation, they, each individual that I have applied, have to initial next to each condition, acknowledging that they will comply to this. And like that Mr. Morgeson stated, this will give the tools to the code enforcement to then enforce, to make sure that these things are being complied with.
Okay, I have one more question. I'm sorry to...
Sure.
We're really beating the horse, but...
No, no.
What if somebody that has one of the two business tax receipts is no longer in business, and another food truck would like to come in, would they just apply the same manner that the previous one did? Or would they have to like close out their BTR or something so that another could come in?
So if the event that one of these, any of the two already approved food trucks go out of business, and they do not close their license, and a third one comes in, staff will not approve the third one until one of the ones is closed. In the event that they do enclose it, then staff will require the information that is required per the state to acquire a BTR, and plus the authorization from the owner of the property, because as we stated, the conditional use runs with the property, they would not have to go through this process of conditional use, because it's already been granted on this address. So all they would need to do is apply for a BTR with authorization from the owner of the property, and stating the times where they're going to be parked, and staff is going to make sure that both businesses are not operating within the same time, or at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
But if a truck, if a truck that has one of these tax receipts decides to just move locations or going, they don't have to rescind their license, right? They're just moving somewhere else?
Yes, but they will have to obtain a conditional use if that property doesn't have one.
Right, right, yeah. I'm just thinking of somebody who just, whether they go out of business, or whether they move on somewhere, it's still going to be the same.
They will keep their BTR, they will have to obtain a new property owner authorization, and if the property does not have already a conditional use, they will have to go through this process.
Okay.
I have a question. Would any given food truck be able to have two tax, two locations at any given time? Like they say, they're on one street from 11:00 to 3:00, and then go to another street from 4:00 to 8:00?
Because it's a property owner conditional use, it doesn't attach to the truck itself. The truck is allowed to operate at the location because of the conditional use, but it doesn't attach to the truck per se. Runs with the land, is conditioned, so it stays with the property.
So tonight's applicant is actually Mr. Hotlins, or the location?
The location. The application should be really for the address of this property. It's just that when we receive this application, we will still creating the process, and to better identify each applicant, we just name them with the name of their business. But in reality, yes, the condition in the application is for the address of the property.
With the agreement of the property owner.
Yes, with the agreement of the property owner.
Okay, good.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution Number, hold on, I got it right there, 2022-159R, based on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code, and along with the understanding that they will follow the conditions suggested by staff.
I second it.
You have a motion, it's been seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that all four ayes?
Yes.
Okay, be loud and proud.
Mr. Rivera, you're an aye?
Aye. Passes four nothing, thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, our next agenda item is Resolution Number 2022-160R, Caribbean Limers LLC for the conditional use, DRC Case Number CNU21-00012.
This is Tammy Recky, I'm Associate Planner in Community Development. So this next case is for the location on 719 13th Street in St. Cloud, for the Caribbean Limers food truck. And the applicant is here tonight, and they can answer any questions. The property is zone highway business with the future land use of commercial. Again, the food trucks are permissible in the highway business through a conditional use application. There will be no adverse impacts on city facilities. On the flow map, we observed that the commercial future land use is contiguous north, east, and west of the property. South of the property is a medium density residential future land use. So for this application, for this location specifically, there's an added condition that the food truck will be parked at least 50 feet from the residential zoning to the south. In the zoning map, the parcels north, east, and west are zone highway business, consistent with the use. And this request meets the intent of the strategic plan goal of growth management and economic development. Staff has reviewed the conditional use on or before May 27 of 2022. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 2022-160R for conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the Land Development Code. And our approval is conditional to comply with the city's mobile food dispensing vehicle guidelines provided to the applicant. And the applicant is in attendance tonight and available for questions, as well as staff.
Would the applicant like to comment or state anything to the board? Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the staff or the applicant?
Is this, is this across the street from the last one? I think it looks on the map, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And can I, can the applicant tell us just a little bit about their business, and why they're starting it?
Please state your name and address.
Yogita Davedin, 2742 Parkfield Road, St. Cloud, 34772. So we are new residents to Florida, to America, actually.
You're welcome.
And St. Cloud, and we decided to open this food truck, because there's nothing like it in St. Cloud. You know, it's unique, a unique flavor, and that's why we chose to stay in St. Cloud and run this business.
Have you been operating anywhere else?
No.
Right now, no?
Just the one location.
Oh, okay, so you've been up and running, what is the, and you're having good success in your...
Yes, we are, St. Cloud received us very well. So we are successful.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to allow for any public comment. Does anybody in the audience have any comments on this agenda item?
I'm hungry.
All right, at this time, I will close the public comment session, and then allow for any other discussion with the commission, or any further questions. Does anybody have anything else?
I noticed number five wasn't in the first one. I think they should add that. I think they should add that to all of them.
Might be a question for staff. The way I read number five was that it was related to this particular property.
So I'll read number five of the staff recommended conditions is that the MFDB shall be parked at least 50 feet from the residential zoning to the south.
Yes, so for this location specifically, if we look at the zoning map, south of, south of that, that subject property is residential zoning and also residential future land use. This was not applicable for the other locations because the other locations, all parcels located directly adjacent from them had the same zoning district and the same future land use. So we made this specific condition for this property since it's adjacent to a residential area.
I think this is indicative of what you were just saying, is that you look at each one individually to make sure it applies, and I respect that.
Thank you.
So on this particular property, it appears from the aerial map that most of that area to the south is grass. So would it be accurate to say that if they were within 50 feet, they would essentially be parked on the grass at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
It has a nice buffer.
I think that's a fair condition, in my opinion. Does anybody else have any other questions, concerns, comments? All right, at this time, I would like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number 2022-160R based on the six factual matters within the land development code and also that the applicant will follow the conditions recommended by staff, the 10 conditions recommended by staff.
Would anyone like to second?
I second it.
All right.
I think Ms. Douglas seconded first, for the record.
Thank you. So we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will move on to the third agenda item, which is resolution number 2022-191R, flavors of heaven, conditional use, DRC case number CNU 22-0003.
I'm Tammy Recky, Associate Planner in Community Development. This is our last conditional use for mobile food dispensing vehicle or food truck that we'll be hearing today. This location is 250113th Street in St. Cloud. The property is on highway business and the future land use is commercial. Food trucks are only permissible in the highway business district through a conditional use, and there will be no adverse impacts to on city facilities. In the future land use map, we can observe that the commercial future land use is contiguous north, south, east, and west of the property, as well as the zoning map will show that all adjacent parcels are zone highway business. This request meets the intent of the strategic plan goals of growth management and economic And staff reviewed this request for conditional use honored before May 27, 2022. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 2022-191R for conditional use based on the six factual matters identified in the land development code. Our approval is conditional to complying with the city's mobile food dispensing vehicle guidelines that were provided to the applicant. And the applicant is in attendance tonight and available for questions as well as staff.
Would the applicant like to speak? Okay, thank you.
We know I'm going to ask you to, tell us about your business.
Is my translate my son?
It's okay, wonderful.
My name is Giovanni Sorio.
And your address?
The address is 250113th Street, St. Cloud, Florida.
Thank you.
Our business is committed to Latin food, Puerto Rican food. And our most wish is that we can serve this community that permit us to live in it.
Is this the location, there's a gas station there too. I mean, thinking Cumberland Farms or in the back of that gas station area. Okay. Gracias.
Thank you. I do have a question for city staff. Item number, on a, on a previous case that we looked at, item number four was placement of MFDB shall be consistent with attached site plan. I do not see that one on this particular, on these conditions. Is there a reason why that one is missing? Although I do see a map that does appear to show a location, a specific location. Is that just an oversight, maybe, or?
Yes, that was an oversight. Thank you for pointing that out. We will add that to the list of the conditions.
All right, maybe I'm just lost. Where are our list of conditions for this to see like a really lot of?
Page five of the report. Page five, top of the, top of the fifth page of the report. There are eight listed conditions for this case. And, I'm sorry, Ms. Recky, could you state what the ninth condition would be that you were, that should be added on to it?
Yes.
The ninth condition would be placement of the mobile food dispensing vehicle shall be consistent with the attached MFDB site plan.
Does this one also have the 50, the, because that is near residential, does this one have that requirement?
It appears that this one is providing a specific location on the property, so it gives specific setbacks from each side of the property. That's on page, that's the one after exhibit, or it's part of Exhibit A, it appears.
So in the zoning map, there's actually a property, the property south to it is still highway business and with the street and the location of the MFDB.
It's only one block back that it is, right? So it's the property right behind it is highway business. And then one, on the next street is when the residences start, so it's plenty of room. Is that what we're saying? All right, got it.
Does anybody else have any other questions for the staff at this time?
Just to clarify for the commission, the ninth condition that staff is recommending would be that the MFDB shall be consistent with the attached MFDB site plan. That's, that's a condition that's missing from the report that wishes to be included.
This time, allow for public comment. We do have an applicant or somebody that would like to make a public comment. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Rosa Holloway, 2514th Street. I own the building right there, right to the south on the corner of Tennessee Avenue and 14th Street. And I have some pictures if you, somebody wants to put that on the overhead.
Those are going to become part of the file on this highway, so hook up.
Okay, I checked out the square footage of the, of the gas station. The gas station has been there for quite a while. It's really, doesn't have enough parking as it is because it was put there prior to today's requirements for parking. It only has 14 parking spaces. And to my calculation, I think it was supposed to be, supposed, in today's, it's supposed to have 26 parking spaces. Now, this picture shows the X, that's where the food park, truck is usually parked, and it blocks the air, but I guess that's their problem. But you see the big old semi is coming in, and it sits right next to the dumpster, which I think that would be a health department issue right there. We already, if you want to go to the next picture, please. Okay, this Tennessee Avenue, you have already, there's no parking signs on both sides of the road, but the big semi is pretty much ignore that. We have the Drifty Store getting deliveries, and they have sometimes two and three trucks right there. And so when the gas station has their trucks coming in too, it gets rather busy right there by that traffic light. Now, this is, as you can see, this is where the food truck is parked. It sits pretty much within a couple of feet of the property line, of my property line, and probably less than eight feet from my offices, because that's an office building with a residential upstairs, okay? And they operate between 10 o'clock in the morning and 10 o'clock at night. Okay, so, and there's a generator going, and it goes the whole time, and then that, and that one office right there that has to, I think if you go to the next one, you might see the closeness. This, you can see the dumpster, you can see my office building, and that white fence, and they're sitting within like a couple of feet inside of that fence. See there, you see a picture, the way that is parked. It sits right next to the dumpster, and in that office, you hear a hum from that generator all the time. The tenant right now, I mean, they're, they're working from home quite a bit still due to COVID, and they have a white noise, noise machine going, and plus they got earplugs in, so it doesn't bother them too much, but they have one more year on the lease. And if, when they leave and I have to find a new tenant, and they, for instance, have to do Zoom calls out of that office, they wouldn't be able to do that because they would hear the hum in the back. So I don't know who would be responsible for the monetary damages that I would have if this is approved. This is, this is not just going to be approved for a special occasion. This runs with the land, so this would be forever. See, see how close that truck is parked? And, and you see, there's one office building, window, but it has two more on, on the other side facing the food truck right there. And we already had vandalism on the property, which we never had before, and you see all the trash laying around. See where the grass is? They pretty much park, and this is only a couple of foot of grass right there on the other side of the fence, and that's where that truck is parked. I already, and that was prior to that food truck, I had to put a screen on the inside of my fence because every time they blow the parking lot, they would blow all the, the trash over to my property. Now, this, this owner, it's a new owner on the gas station, he's much better than the previous one. But here's the vandalism. I had some bricks, can you go back to the previous picture? Would that be possible? See on that back white fence on the bottom, I had a few little bricks, they were laying there, and nobody ever goes back there, you don't see them, okay? But within the first month that the food truck was there, those bricks were thrown all over my landscaping in the front of my building. I had a rose bush pulled right out of my landscaping. I had a, you know, those walk pavers, these, what are they, like a foot and a half, five foot and a half, that lays right there in front of the entrance door on my, on the one-story building. It was in my retention ditch, all broken up. So, yeah, we never had anything like that happen before. But you know, I mean, people hang out around the food trucks, especially at night, and then they walk around and mess things up. See how close that is? And, and the door, I mean, I don't, I would imagine that the health department would have an issue with, with this going on right next to a dumpster.
Well, I do want to mention to city staff, after seeing the pictures and looking a little more closely at the layout, it does appear that the designated area for this mobile food, food dispensing vehicle would be very difficult, if not impossible, for the vehicle to occupy that single space.
No, it has more than one space.
Because of the adjacency to the dumpster pad enclosure. So has anybody looked at the size of the truck and what the turning radius requirement would be to actually get into that space?
They, they bring the food truck in with a pickup truck. So the pickup truck is parked.
Oh, so it's a trailer?
Yeah, it's a trailer. The pickup truck, they pulled the truck in there, okay? And then the pickup truck is pretty much parked on the second parking space over. But don't forget, the location already has not enough parking for the retail space that they have. They have almost 5,000 square feet of retail space, and this is not just the gas station. There is another business in there too, a computer business, plus they have the gas station. The gas station, if you have a larger truck, you can't pump your gas and then make a right-hand turn and go out on 192. You actually have to back up. And you know, with the larger truck, chances are, you're going to have to back up into the parking spaces that actually front the building. There is, there's just not enough room for another business and the loose parking. You know, I mean.
Is the, is the owner of the gas station here tonight? No? And do they not have any, do we have any information, I'm asking, I'm asking staff, do we have any information from the owners of the gas station that they have any problem with the parking or the computer store? Any issues?
We actually have been working with them.
You'll have to come up and say your name.
My name is Giovanni Yansel, I'm his son. So we have been working with the owners about it, and the trash hasn't really be like us, us completely, I guess, because that's, that's, me as a son, that's what I work for, keep everything clean around. And about that, you, you asked me that if the, the owner's not here today, but, what was the question?
Have you spoken to the owner? Have they talked to you about any issues of parking and traffic, et cetera?
No, when we. When we were making the, the planner of the parkings, they were saying that. Yeah, the planner, gave it, gave it to us, the owner of the store. So it was saying, it was, he told us that it was, the parkings that they were there, they were the, the ones necessary for, for the building.
So those are considered excess, this?
Yeah, there was, the, the only one excess that was the one that was the food truck at, you know?
And staff, there was, is there anything about dumpsters or whatever that we need to be concerned or worried about? Is that something that?
Is public comment closed? Or can I?
Well, I'm not finished yet.
Can I, can I?
I think, just procedurally.
I think, just procedurally, I think allow Ms. Holloway to finish her presentation, her time. And then that, then that can spawn some discussion with other staff or.
Yes, please finish your presentation, Ms. Holloway.
Okay, well, I, I don't care what the owner says, if he, if he feels that he has a problem with parking or not. Based on the parking requirements for the square footage of retail space, plus the gas station, they do not have enough parking, you know, as per what's required. You know, there's, it's just not there. I believe in my calculation, they were supposed to, the requirements are twenty-six parking spaces and they only have fourteen. So they don't have access parking spaces, okay? Do I have more pictures there?
I think that was it.
Okay, well, and, and I mean, I mean, it, it does hurt my business and my building and my building value. And I've been in, in this city for a long time. See there, see how close it is to my building? It's within eight feet of my offices, you know, my office windows. And you got a generator going out, on out there. You know, I mean, you, you can hardly expect for people to work there for hours, you know, at the time and listen to a generator going. It's just not possible. If that owner wants a food truck on his property, let him find a different location, but not right there on the property line where it disturbs my tenants and really devalues my building and my, my income. Thank you.
Understood, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? At this time, we will close the public comment session and allow for discussion with the council.
Mr. Chair, did, did you or one of the commission members have questions of staff?
Yes, yes, I actually do have some other questions for the staff. My first question is the 130 feet setback from the north boundary of the property. Where, and I guess maybe the 2611 from the east also. Where are those numbers derived from?
Are you referring to the site plan?
Sorry, could you turn it ninety degrees to the left so that we're looking at north is north? Oh, other, other direction. There you go, thank you.
Dagmar Estegar, Planning Manager. What was the question again?
The question was, where did you derive the 130 feet from the north boundary and the 2611 from the east boundary?
Based on the, this, what you're seeing overhead is the site plan that was approved for the gas station. The dimensions were taken based on the scale of the site plan from the property line to the north all the way to the where the, we're recommending for the food truck to be parked.
So can you see the issue that I was addressing earlier when I was talking about the turning radius to actually get the trailer into that spot? I don't know that that would be possible. And so my concern is that saying that it has to be at this exact location, I don't know that that's possible.
We can definitely modify it. We can amend our recommendation that the park, that the truck be parked in a different parking space. If we move it north to the next space, that will be approximately 21 feet from the property line to the south.
And then my next question is, how exactly is, are these determined for the food dispensing vehicles? Are, do they have to basically get approval from the property owner first and then apply for a permit for the conditional use?
That's correct.
Is that how it works?
That's correct. And if I may add, in regards to other businesses, we just verified on our bit, uh, business tax receipts data. The only business that we have currently in this location is the gas station. And according to the parking calculations per Land Development Code, which is one space to, per 200, 250 square feet, they are exceeding the parking, the minimum parking by one space.
So you're saying that the zoning code requires, based on square footage of the structure, 200 square feet?
250.
250, one space per 250 square feet. And you're saying they have one extra space than what is needed? Now, is that requirement factored in when somebody applies? So basically the business, if somebody goes to a business and they get approval from the business owner, do they then have to have an extra parking space per the zoning code in order to even get approval for a food truck to be there?
That is part of their criteria when we evaluate a condition, a request for a conditional use for a food truck. That is part of the criteria that we, that we review in that guide that we created. One of the criterias is that if they're going to be utilizing parking, that the existing property needs to have parking that, that exceeds the minimum requirement. But that is in the event if they're using a parking space for their location. In this case, they are.
Right. But it wouldn't necessarily dictate which exact parking spot they would need to use unless we had a situation like the previous case where the request was to be 50 feet away from residential or something, something like that.
Exactly. And, 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 and this location, this proposed location is the worst-case scenario. Like I said, we could move the, and make it a bigger buffer to the property to the south. In that way, it's about 21 feet. They're not, if we use the term as a condition as recommended by staff, by the location of the food truck, we can amend that recommendation to be to the revised location of the, as stated in the staff, on the plans presented on tonight.
So is your concern or your questions are asking because of the location of the truck, not the size of the parking lot? And does it fit or does it go with?
Correct, yeah, I'm specifically referring to, because in the, in the conditions, it says that the food truck or the, this food dispensing vehicle has to be in the designated area.
From the site plan.
That's shown in the site plan. And my argument with this location shown in this plan is that you would not be able to get it into that space. So you're basically.
But they've been there.
Well, they haven't been just in that space. If you look at the pictures, it's been kind of at an angle, you know, sort of.
You're saying that it is taking up more than one space?
Correct, yeah, I don't believe that it, I mean, I didn't see in any of the pictures where it was actually in that particular space.
I think, and the spaces on that driveway are probably questionable, so.
And the size of the space is 14 feet, it appears is what's written on here, by eight and a half feet.
Yeah, because it's just a trailer, it's not a full truck.
Um, do we know how long this particular trailer is? Is it within the 14 feet?
Yeah, the, the trailer is 14 feet.
Is the generator an additional item or is it part of the truck?
My name is Giovanni Yancel and it's a silent generator and that's it. Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
It's attached to the truck. It's attached to the truck. They don't need an additional space to locate the generator.
Does anybody have any other comments, discussion? I mean, from my point of view, I don't, I don't want to say, hey, they can't, you know, have their food truck here. However, when I'm looking at it, the, the particular area that is shown is, would be impossible to actually get the trailer in, is, you know, my statement. And I don't know what other, so you said basically if you did update the plan, you would just move it one space to the north, correct?
That would be your recommendation.
I've seen it there and I, and I, I didn't notice anything that was brought up. So no disrespect intended, but I was just saying it can't fit in a spot. I, I've actually been at it. So I'm just saying that there is a possibility that, that movement of it could, could help. If that was the, the biggest concern, that it's not going to fit where you think it should fit.
I would actually recommend two spaces because moving it one space, I still feel that it is, for vehicle travel as far as turning radius, would still be in conflict with the existing dumpster pad to get it into that space.
Staff have no objection. As long as it's not next to the handy cat space, we have no objection.
At this time, if there's no other discussion or questions, I would like to call for a motion.
I'd like a motion to recommend approval of resolution 2022-191R based on six, on the six factual matters within the Land Development Code and the recommendation of being able to move it two spaces up.
And the additional conditions as well, Dr. Rivera?
Yeah.
So all, all nine conditions that were proposed by staff?
Oh, with the, yeah, with the new, with the nine.
With the additional adjustment to move it two spaces to the north from its current location on the site plan?
Correct.
Okay, just, just clarify.
Do I have a second? All right, at this time, we will call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes four zero with the adjusted conditions.
At this time, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, which is ordinance number 2022-13. Edgewater Annexation by Incumbents, DRC, DRC Case Number ANX21-00011. And the applicant is the City of St. Cloud.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Erin Struck, Transportation Manager. The cases before you today, we've tried a new thing. I think you may have seen this once or twice before, but we have a combined staff report for all three cases as well. Did we read into the record all three cases?
Yeah, what she's proposing obviously is to, because it's the annexation by incumbents, future land use and zoning that they all be presented by staff through one unified presentation when it's time for a decision from and recommendation that we take each matter independently for motion and voting. Is that right?
Okay, so the cases in front of you are the Annexation Complan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment proposed for Edgewater. It's a property on the west side of the Turnpike, north and south of Kissimmee Park Road. And it is approximately 1,500 acres in size. It is contiguous and reasonably compact. It abuts the city, city limits on the eastern property boundary across the Turnpike. And the existing future land use designation in the county is mixed use and the existing county zoning is also mixed use. The proposed future land use designation in the city is the same, mixed use. And the proposed zoning is also mixed use. We're literally just annexing it and not recommending any changes with the intensity or development entitlements with these requests. It's compatible with the surrounding area and there are no adverse impacts on city facilities. On the left side of the screen is the future land use map. And you can see that everything out there on the west side of the Turnpike is part of a mixed-use district in the county currently. And this is just a portion of that mixed-use district that is closest to the city limits. In the zoning map, same concept. They, everyone west of the Turnpike there many years ago shifted into mixed-use zoning. This proposal to annex into the city and the Complan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment meet the strategic plan goal of growth management and infrastructure. DRC staff has a recommendation. I'll just add a couple of things. We had new information, I'm not sure if you saw in your staff report, but we had not yet received the school board's recommendation or the county's recommendation in time for the publication of the staff reports. But we did receive today the school capacity report from the school board. So I'd just like to read that information if you don't mind, since you don't have it in your package.
Yes, please.
The school district staff is requesting the following special condition to be added. Per the East of Lake Toho Element adopted by the Osceola County Board of County Commissioners on August 16th, 2010, 275 acres have been identified for schools in Table 1 for the East of Lake Toho Conceptual Master Plan. The school board is requesting one high school site and one combination school site to be dedicated with the Edgewater development. For clarification purposes, dedicated, not donated. The school board would purchase the school sites with Educational System Impact Fee credits, cash, or a combination of the two options. The school board is prepared to finalize the School Capacity Mitigation and Funding Agreement for the high school site located in Edgewater East and to enter into discussions for a School Capacity Mitigation and Funding Agreement for a K-8 school site in Edgewater West. So essentially what this is saying is that there's an obligation to provide school sites within these areas. They already have those sites depicted on plans that are approved at the county and they're working on those agreements now in coordination with the county. Essentially that coordination would continue at whatever point they're annexed. We kind of pick up the ball and run with it at that point. But they want to memorialize that those are requirements once annexed. Additionally, in your staff report, I give a little more detail about the condition that is requested on the screen. The property information report that was provided, it had a legal description for around 1,550 acres. They have, since that legal description was provided, they have platted the land into smaller parcels that they have sold off to individual developers. They've platted right away as a part of that. So some of the land that was in the original legal description as being owned by them is no longer owned by them and has been given to the county for the purpose of putting roads in it, right? That has changed the total property acreage and reduced it down to the 1,499 acres in total. But we are requesting an updated title report with an accurate legal description by final public hearing. So the ordinance here that you have in front of you for all three cases contains that legal description. And we're asking that we put some belts and suspenders on it and get that perfectly accurate by the time of a final public hearing and the ordinance being signed. So technically, there are two requested conditions of approval. The condition from the school board that I just read into the record about finalizing the School Capacity Mitigation and Funding Agreement and acknowledging that there's a site, two sites required. And then the request to update the property information report with the legal description. We have not yet received feedback from Osceola County. That is unusual, but we had an expedited turnaround on, on bringing this to public hearing. If we get that information, I had hoped to receive it today prior to the meeting, but we do not have that yet. So of course, we will respond to whatever requests that they have prior to city council hearing. But I'm here to answer any questions you have.
So let me make sure that you, that I understand what you had said. You said the school board, one of the conditions was to have two sites for two types of schools, one being a high school and one being, did you say, special education?
They called it a combination school site.
Combination.
And then later in their, in the next paragraph, they called it a K to eight school site.
So maybe combination meaning elementary and middle?
I think so, yes.
Okay. And then my next question is, the, it sounds like you don't have those locations established yet exactly. But do we have, so there was two things. There was 275 acres set aside, right, for schools? And? And then there was some amount of the property set aside for county roads. Did we have a map or a, or anything that shows those two items?
Sure. The county roads will be shown when the legal description is updated. We'll have new parcels identified. Actually, technically, what is in your package now, and I can put it on the screen if that's helpful. So this map here, um, it reflects the area as replatted. So the picture shows you the area that should ultimately be included in the revised legal description. And you'll see in that there is some new curvy roads there. It's the realignment of Kissimmee Park Road that was memorialized in the conceptual master plan. I can't talk and point at the same time. Oh, I can do my laser pointer if you all want to look behind you on the screen, if that's helpful. So you can see there's, um, the framework street alignment that's up here comes down and comes down here as well. And so some of that and some of the pond sites that are adjacent to that, that are going to hold the stormwater for that road make up some of the around fifty-ish acres that was in the original legal description that's, that's not in the final. But for the school sites, we do have that information. At the final public hearing for city council, a mixed use district is implemented by a concept plan. And there is already a concept plan on file with the county and approved concept plan. So in order to bring development in this district forward, the city will need to acknowledge that concept plan in order to use that concept plan as a review tool for the next subsequent approvals. So just because they processed it doesn't mean that we can just defer to them already having processed it. We have to essentially accept that approved concept plan. The city has to do that. So there will be a separate case along with the zoning at the second public hearing for city council to accept that approved concept plan. That shows school sites and they will be, forgive me for not knowing explicitly where they are, but they are on property. I think there's one in this area or this area here within, within this, um, the fifteen hundred acres. I don't know where all of the other ones are outside of that. But those sites are already selected and they are within the fifteen hundred acres that's being annexed, not in right of way.
So I also have to ask you about the, although it's not in the boundary of the, of this request, it, I'm looking at the area north of the, uh, of this, um, particular request. And there's two roads that are shown, which I believe are intended to be future roads. Because basically I'm looking at the triangle, uh, between the canal and the proposed annexation. Are those roads, and that, that area is currently agriculture, I believe, or zoned as agriculture? So are those roads that are shown, are, is there approval for the county to connect that to Tohoku? Or what, what exactly are we looking at there?
Sure. Um, let me flip to the maps. Oh, I'm so sorry, I've gone ahead. You're talking about the yellow piece up here.
Yes.
And this piece currently zoned agricultural over here.
Correct.
Those property owners came together about ten years ago, maybe a little bit less than that, in coordination with the county prior to coming into the city. And they dedicated right away for those two parallel framework streets to go all the way down even under, under East Lake Toho. They've done some really coordinated planning with all of these. They were large property owners. So they have a great interest in ensuring that their roads connect and that they're sufficient, right? So they've dedicated that right away already through here and through here. We haven't have any development applications in this area yet. In, in with the city, the triangle piece is already annexed into the city. And then Tohoku to the west has already constructed their framework streets. And I think they're fully open for the full limit of those roadways. Maybe this little piece is, is left to build. Maybe this whole road is actually left to build and this other one is open already. Excuse me, Cross Prairie Parkway is already constructed. The bridges across the canal have not yet been constructed and there are no one's obligation to build them yet. They are going to be funded either through mobility fees or private development or through proportionate share agreements. And so what the county is doing right now is they've brought all the landowners together from the East Lake Toho area, which extends even off this map. And then the South Lake Toho area, which would be like way over here on the south side of the lake. They've brought all of those conceptual master plans, which delineate in their comprehensive plan where those framework streets are. They've quantified the cost of those roadways and they are currently, they have an agreement to agree, signed by property owners, large property owners out there. And they are evaluating what's the share that each development has in those roadways so they can sure, ensure that when the applications for development on those properties come together, that the funding all adds up and the roads are all built. So they're working on that. It's a real high level study. They did this with the Sun Bridge development out at the east side of the county, uh, north of Harmony, and they're trying that model here again. So it's all based on the approved, because they did such great planning for the roadways, now they can quantify the cost of those roadways and then actually pass that along to the developers. So those types of things, like those two framework streets in here, if they are not constructed by that triangle piece, hopefully they'll be funded as a part of the greater system.
So then, does this tie in at all to a future Turnpike interchange? And is that, is any information available for that and how that would impact this area?
Great questions. Um, the Turnpike currently is widened to eight lanes down to Osceola Parkway. They have on the books, starting in twenty twenty-four, um, they have widening from Osceola Parkway all the way down. Excuse me, I'm trying to find Kissimmee Park Road. I think it's right around here, there, Kissimmee Park Road. They have it all funded for construction to eight lanes. So currently it's four lanes on the Turnpike and they're going to widen it to eight lanes. So everyone knows the challenges that they have with that interchange at Kissimmee Park Road. Right, right now, there's a lot of backup and it causes some conflict on Canoe Creek Road as well. They are mitigating that by widening the Turnpike and then adding additional opportunities to get on the Turnpike. So Nolte Road, which comes from the east, it will have a connection from Canoe Creek Road to the Turnpike right here, just north of Tika Village, I believe. Um, and there will be a new interchange location that will tie in to the framework street on the west side and they will have access from this area to get to the Turnpike without going across the Turnpike and then back, you know? And then additionally, up at one ninety-two, at, I would call it the St. Cloud crossing of one ninety-two, where there's the northbound off ramp. They have programmed a full interchange there. And so at the same timeline, open by twenty twenty-eight, we should have two new interchanges in this area. One at Nolte Road right there and one at US one ninety-two, full interchange at kind of the western limits of St. Cloud.
So do you know, do they already have all the rights away necessary for that?
Yes. And all the funding allocated as well.
So one of my biggest concerns with this location is that it is so isolated, not isolated necessarily, but because of the Turnpike, there's really no place to cross other than what we have right now is Kissimmee Park Road, and right now, that's it.
Kissimmee Park Road.
I mean, that's it. That's all we have right now. So my concern is, you know, I, I see all these future plans and everything, but, you know, when is that going to happen in comparison with the housing? Because I've driven in that area recently and most of the roads are already developed. I, I have a feeling houses will be finished within like two, three months, or maybe sooner, I don't know. So my concern is that we're, that this area is going to grow faster than we can provide the infrastructure needed to access it or to get out of it for the people that live there.
Yes, and, and if you've been out there recently, you've seen they've even landscaped those roads by now, so they're looking official as well.
Now, I do understand that this was the county's decision to do all of this. What, I guess I'm trying to understand, uh, what would be the impact to the city by annexing this in? Understanding that, you know, we've already, we're already providing sewer and water, right? And that's the reason for the encumbrance annexation. But as far as, um, other implications to the city itself, what, what was considered as far as, um, you know, considering, let's think about fire department access. Now, I know there is a close fire station to this, however, there is only one way in, one way out. And it would be the same for, you know, police and things like that. So have we done any, or has the county, I should say, done any studies on that and, and how that would be impacted? The service, to service this area since currently there's only one lane in and one lane out?
Yes, they have in relationship to lots of levels of service that was examined. At the time, the conceptual master plan was put in place and this was incorporated as mixed use into the Osceola County comprehensive plan. In addition to that, and I'm not speaking to traffic yet, so everything else, fire, police, those types of things were evaluated and there's lots of data and analysis that went into that plan to determine that the number of school sites that were planned were sufficient, the number of fire stations planned are sufficient. And I don't have that information in front of you because that's not the cases before you. But I sent out the link to the, um, adopted comp plan element that the city has taken on. The concept plan is generally consistent with that. It doesn't change the development entitlements, but it may kind of move scooch things a little bit. Um, and those things are reviewed for consistency and if it's determined consistent. So the concept plan may look a little bit different, but it should seem to contain the same supporting infrastructure. In addition to that, in the agreement, the Water and Wastewater Service Annexation and Development Agreement that these property owners signed with the city when they sought water, which is the first step to actually building houses. That agreement contained conditions regarding mobility fees, development standards, water and wastewater service provisions and fire protection. They also contained conditions related to this annexation itself. The fire protection stuff in there speaks to the need to provide locations for fire stations. And I got with our fire chief before this item came forward to just make sure he didn't have any additional concerns about being able to provide fire service out there. But my understanding is there are terms in the agreement that dictate the timing of those things coming to fruition and they have those sites already allocated. So yes, we are concerned about the impact to Canoe Creek Road because there's a fire station there that serves not this area, existing residents, right? And we've played a big role in, in looking at the impact on that road, but that is a county road as well.
You're talking about on Old Canoe Creek Road, right?
Old Canoe Creek, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Just, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
That's okay.
The old Kissimmee Park Road, Canoe, yes.
Yeah.
Exactly. Additionally, to speak more to traffic, in addition to the interchanges that I talked about before, at Kissimmee Park Road, um, right now, they're doing what they call TSMNO improvements, which is transportation, management, service and operation improvements, which are like technology improvements. So they're looking at any ways to improve the capacity of those on and off ramps to get it to move better. People kind of log jam there. It's a real short place where a lot of turning movements intersect and it kind of backs up. They're addressing that now. That project should be under construction within the next year, but we're negotiating the final terms of kind of how that should work. The city's a party to those conversations and the county's a party to it because Kissimmee Park Road is a county road. Old Canoe Creek is a county road. So we're coordinating with them on getting the most out of that existing partial interchange now before the twenty twenty-eight interchange at Nolte is fully constructed. We've also asked the Turnpike to look at additional ways to retain the Kissimmee Park Road partial interchange as well, if there's any way. My understanding is the off ramps and on ramps intersect. And we've kind of asked if they can do them all in combination with one another instead of adding a full interchange and then taking a partial interchange away. But we're working on those details with them. Additionally, further south, not to go too far in traffic, but you got the transportation manager presenting. But, uh, south of Kissimmee Park Road down here, they're looking, I think, all the way down to where the South Port Connector, which is the Beltway system that's going to be managed by CFX. They're looking, they're doing a PDNE right now for widening that road and determining the ultimate connections to the Turnpike. So that people that live on the west side of the Turnpike don't have to go to the east side to get onto that facility. But again, those north-south, um, parallel roadways that would allow you to get to the west without crossing over the Turnpike to the east are the critical piece of making that network function. And those folks will hopefully pay into that network when they get those subsequent development approvals. Based on the agreement and the study that the county is doing now.
So is there any, uh, and this is related to traffic still. Is there any projected numbers for the number of, um, housing units in this particular, uh, annexation? Or none of that's been considered?
Like the type of, um...
Not really type, but more so. Number of family units.
That is memorialized on the concept plan. I do not have those numbers in front of me here. But I think what you're asking, is there a relationship between those numbers and how many they get to before they have to make a certain transportation improvement?
That's exactly what I'm getting to.
And I do not think that has been done.
And not only the, the number, but the timing. I know we talk about how these great roads sound magnificent. However, it's, we annex in the city, we do whatever we do here and then people start building and things happen and we haven't really established that. So I think when you're talking about, right, county versus the city, great, we annex in, but then the county says, oh, we just aren't ready to do those roads. How do we have any ability and power as, as residents to kind of help control that?
I think we're going to learn a lot from the modeling study that's being done by the county. But, um, I think with respect to the county roads, the county ultimately would be the one to apply those conditions. We look at the traffic studies from these developments and look at the impact on the surrounding network and have the ability to require improvements. But my understanding is that the study is supposed to try to stay ahead of those things. But again, I don't believe there's anything yet developed that ties, you know, unit number two fifty to this roadway. I know they have to build all of the roadways that are within their project boundaries. It's those off-site improvements I think you're referring to.
Yes.
That the modeling study is going to.
To create that interconnectivity.
Exactly.
That is probably necessary to really have access in and out of this particular series of developments.
I can request more information specifically from the county on that, but the latest I have is that that study is underway now. And I don't know their, um, what the outcome will be.
My other concern on this is that, you know, early on in your, in your presentation, you had said that this at one time was one developer and now has been, uh, divvied into several developers. And so my concern there is, uh, you know, is one developer going to, you know, build their area faster than another? And, and what are the sort of? And, and what are the sort of, um, similarities? I mean, obviously, they, they're gonna have to follow, uh, the, the, uh, city ordinance for, um, you know, setbacks and, and, you know, number of units on acres and things like that. But, uh, it's just a little bit concerning to me that there's so many different developers at play here, uh, in one, in one area.
Yeah, um, there is, again, with this, if you see the blue area, there's, you know, the massive conceptual master plan. Um, that was a plan for this giant area, and it wasn't generated by individual landowners. I think it was generated with major property owners requesting increased development entitlements. But those individual property owners were not necessarily party to this application when it was processed by Osceola County. They made a plan for the area, they captured the development entitlements, and they did this high-level study of what the land would support and how much infrastructure was necessary. But those individual property owners didn't make that request. Implementing that conceptual master plan is driven by an individual property owner. So each of those individual property owners, if there's not a master concept plan, would need to come in, say you own 20 acres out there, and all this is happening around you, and you just wanted to retire there. But now you're thinking, I want to get out, how am I gonna sell this, right? The next step for those folks would be to do a concept plan on just that 20 acres and show how it fits in to the greater piece of the pie. For this particular 1,500 acres, there are approved concept plans on all 1,500 acres. The next step after a concept plan is go into preliminary subdivision plan. And at that point, it gets down to those individual developers. So we had pretty much one large property owner, a couple different entity names of this 1,500 acres, and they've now sold off to three individual developers, a couple of parcels of that. So there are three, we are aware of, and they've sold it already, so those three developers are party to these applications, um, before you today. Uh, M I Homes, Meritage Homes, and I think Emerson as well. Um, so, uh, because they own it already, they're a party to this annexation, but they do already have the concept plan in place that tells how they'll fit in and what pieces of everything they're responsible for. And then when the city processes any subsequent development applications, that'll kind of break it down to their subdivision versus their subdivision. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes.
Very well, but...
Yeah, I, I think so. Uh, and prior to this meeting, I did ask for, uh, that conceptual master plan to be sent to the rest of the board. Did, did everybody get that?
And there's also a copy, um, at your seats, too. Thank you, Jesse.
Yes.
And, uh, do we have any other questions for staff before we move on to public comment? Anybody?
Not right now, no, public comment.
Okay. At this time, we will move on, we allow for public comment. And I have, uh, a request from Douglas Stapleton. Would you like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Sure, my name's Doug Stapleton, 2800 Silverthorne Trail, St. Cloud, 34772.
Thank you.
I live really close to the areas that you've been talking about, and we live out there for reasons, and I understand that y'all have nothing to do with what the county's changing out there. But if the city annexes that, how much, they don't have to come very far west, maybe a couple streets for Silverthorne from Cross Prairie. Is the city gonna come there? That's gonna change, not only is the whole area changing, but how mu- how much will it change the rural area we, little bit we have left there if it becomes city? And what will that impact on the rest of all of us that live out there? You know, we already got a lot coming through there as it is. Does this city, does that mean that all of us will have to become city then? Or will that just tie in, just buffer right up to us? I mean, eventually, you're gonna keep annexing more and more west, I'm assuming, because the, it's gonna develop that way when they go north and west of it there. As far as what she was, the lady was just saying, talking about the roads, I just went through all this with, uh, the Turnpike people, because they wanted to cut us off where we couldn't go north, but that's a whole nother thing. But if, if they don't develop that bridge, there's no way you're gonna have any of us come from, that are small business people. I just come from work, I mean, we're, if you, if we become city, how, first of all, how are we gonna get out? And second off, are we gonna be able to run a business in a city if y'all annex? You're not very far from me, I mean, how much more is that gonna affect all of us that live out there? I don't know. Is there any, is there any plan or any studies on any of that?
And the commission appreciates the comments, and those are taken as a rhetorical question to the commission, because the commission's not here to answer, they're certainly here to take your feedback, and that may generate discussion with staff on some of the points you've raised.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, do we have any, oh, I have one other request, which I believe was the same, uh, just as annexation, but James Lamb? Please state your name and address.
Thank you, uh, James Lamb, 2860 Stagecoach Road, uh, St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. Um, I guess, just like Doug, our, uh, concern would be, you know, whenever she talks about scooching, I'm the scooch, I'm literally the next road, uh, west on Clay Whaley after this, uh, comes through. And not me, but some of my neighbors have, we all have five-acre plots, but we have businesses that revolve around livestock, uh, cows, horses, chickens, things that I know aren't allowed within the city. So if you guys do annex us, what happens? Are, are we just, hey, we gotta sell our cows? Or how does, how is that gonna work? And one of the other roads that's coming through, I know Cross Prairie is going to be to our east, but the Tohiku Parkway West is gonna be in between basically Clay Whaley and Silverthorne. And at that point, you know, what, there, there's no reason for you guys not to annex that, other than the fact that we're existing and we have five acre, we're mixed-use agricultural now. Is there a mixed-use agricultural zoning that exists within the city? That's, I guess, maybe another rhetorical question.
Well, those are, those are all valid questions, the commission's here to take all your comments.
Yeah.
Those would be questions that, uh, the commission may want to clarify with staff, or staff may want to speak to after you've concluded with your comments.
Okay, uh, and then my third, uh, question would be, um, the schools. Uh, at what point is the timeline on the schools? Do we have any information on that? Uh, the area that she pointed out, and I, and I already knew this, um, based off of where we live, but that school is going to back up to, uh, the east side of Clay Whaley, or, I'm sorry, uh, Stagecoach. So the properties that we've got, we're gonna have, on the other side of me, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a high school in our backyard. But, uh, it's all part of progress, I understand that. Uh, but what's the timeline on that? So that was about all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to ask city staff to answer some of these questions. Do I need to close? Oh, we have, we have another, uh, public comment requested, uh, John Chris- Christensen. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Christensen, I'm the property owner at 2851 Kissimmee Park Road. And, uh, we are not in Edgewater. I think that's important to understand, there's nine properties that are excluded from the development, from the plan. Being the property owner there and knowing that this was coming, I, I did a lot of studying, read the development plan, and to answer your question, we are, what's being developed right now is referred to, I think it's E D five or E D four. Um, that's the initial parcel that the one property owner from Boca Raton, Florida, he's the one, or that group is what's developing that whole thing. E D five is the first parcel that's going. And there are, if you read, your, your staff will get you the information, 660 residential housing units in that piece that's being developed right now. Not counting any school traffic, uh, from the high school. So your concern about, um, getting in and out of that subdivision, uh, particularly in an emergency, depending on the time of day, because I'll guarantee you, when school's out, there's gonna be a backup from that traffic light that's gonna be days to get out. If y'all want to buy that problem from the county, then annex the development. But otherwise, I don't know if I'd touch it. I know the builders, uh, I'm from Columbus, Ohio, and that's where M I got started, and I was a builder and a developer, and I can tell you, they're going breakneck speed out there. They're publicly traded companies, so they got deep pockets, they got financing, they don't have to worry about a recession. And the landscaping that's going on looks great, but I'll tell you what, that is just going to accelerate the growth out there. And if you go out, drive out there on a nice sunny day, you'll see Cross Prairie Parkway is going. I mean, it's way down there. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the city would gain from annexing this property. But again, you're gonna be, you're right, there'll be houses out there, it won't be three months, and it won't be six months. But probably by the end of the year, there will, somebody will have model homes out there. And when the people come, you guys are gonna have to fire, you're gonna have to have more police officers, more fire. It all takes time. And you won't be able to service in that period of time with just one exit and entrance. So I think your, your point is well-taken, that you, you wanna, if you have, if you see this coming down the pike in years to come, that, that maybe you want to annex that, and of course, at that time, there's a lot of homeowners that are gonna be part of that, uh, notice. So this makes it easy right now. So you, you do have one developer and three builders. So take, take your thoughts and, and do it.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other?
Just want to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to the commission and to the members of the community that are here, that the, this, uh, the commission is an advisory commission, is gonna be making its recommendation to the city council. These matters will be heard again, uh, at an upcoming city council meeting as well, just want to clarify that.
And two, right, because they'll have an initial hearing and then a final hearing, correct?
I believe so, I don't know the exact schedule, but yeah, that's correct. There'll be, there'll be two public hearings before the council at future dates.
It looks like the first reading is August 11th, and the final reading will be October 13th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another, uh, resident that would like to provide public comment, Jared Wilkin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jared Wilkin, uh, M I Homes, or 400 International Parkway in Lake Mary. Um, wanted to come, obviously, as one of the builders, uh, as Aaron mentioned, in the community, uh, answer any questions, concerns. Uh, we will be, uh, pulling permits in the county shortly. Uh, it's all part of kind of the agreement that was papered a while back. Uh, but we will be filing those permits shortly. Uh, in the county, there's amenity permits and, and some of the final permits that we've gotta get initiated, uh, that would happen before the annexation, uh, but just to let you guys know that.
So if you pull the permits, how long until you start building?
Uh, that is a great question in today's climate, it's definitely not three months. Uh, you know, it'd help a lot of people if it was, uh, but we, as soon as we can.
And how many are you planning?
Uh, in our, our section, we, it's a, it's two phases, uh, as Aaron said, it's three builders. Uh, I'd have to get back to you on the exact lots in the first phase, uh, but I believe it's around 140 in the first phase.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, I would like to ask the staff to answer some of the questions. Uh, I believe Mr. Lamb had a question about annexation and how that occurs. Uh, I believe he was concerned with some agricultural land, or that's currently zoned agricultural. Could you just quickly, um, explain the annexation process?
Sure, um, so when properties are annexed, they have to be contiguous and reasonably compact. Um, typically, um, a developer or a landowner is not required to annex unless they were to seek water and sewer from the city, because we're the utility provider. So until such time that those folks want to develop something different than what they have, they likely would not be seeking annexation at all. And until such time that the city fully surrounds them and creates an enclave where they are within that enclave, statutorily, we do not have any interest or, um, obligation to annex those parcels either. Um, in addition to that, um, they currently have agricultural zoning, we have an agricultural zoning in the city. I'm not quite sure if each of the individual businesses that they operate on their properties today are permissible within our agricultural zoning, I can look at that in greater detail, and I will do that before the city council hearing. But until such time that they seek to have these entitlements that are memorialized in the comprehensive plan and the conceptual master plan, and they come in with a concept plan on their individual properties to utilize those entitlements, they have the right to retain the entitlements that they currently have. So, um, they, they, it may be difficult, surrounded by things, to run those types of businesses, but there's no obligation to come into the city and cease those operations. I had a couple more notes, but I'll wait until you have, if you have specific questions, and then I'd like to add a few details.
Uh, I don't think I have any specific questions at the moment.
Can I just get a clarification on that?
Yes.
So, so as one of your, so you're saying the neighboring properties then would not need to be annexed if there was an agreement to annex in the Edgewater?
Right, and for example, one of the gentlemen, um, excuse me, I think it was Mr. Christensen, um, when he mentioned he was off Kissimmee Park Road, and we'll call that out too much, but there's, I think, it's hard to tell, because all of the property boundaries have this same dash line on them, so you can't really tell what's in and what's out. But I think there's six properties in a row here that are on Kissimmee Park Road that are not included in this request at all. And so they are kind of surrounded, but they're not part of this, and so the city is not annexing those until such time they seek, seek to do that.
Okay, so just as she's saying, so if somebody is running a business in there, or has livestock or agriculture, whatever, they're not being necessarily annexed in, so they will not have to jump through hoops and get more licensing and pay more whatevers. It really, life just doesn't change, other than the fact that they're now sandwiched in to this.
Exactly, like the future land use map controls the future development if they were propos- to propose to do it. Um, until such time that they seek to do something different than what they are, they don't have to utilize the direction of the, of future land use element. Um, so, like, in an instance where there would be a house out there and it'd be commercial in the future, they don't have to flip to commercial, but at such time they choose not to be a house anymore, they have to be commercial, right? If that makes sense?
Yes, yes, yes. And, and so, and this, I'm gonna ask you this, but I may be deferring to Mr. Morgeson, but, um, what is the benefit of the city annexing all of this in? Why, why doesn't the county do it, or take care of this?
Um, in total, I would say the, it's related to two things, timing and then overall. So if these properties develop, if, in... ...seek and to annex into the city. If the city were to deny annexing these properties, they would retain the existing entitlements that they have in the county, and they would have the right to develop in the county. So overall, things are not gonna change if we choose not to annex them. We just don't bear the burden of servicing them. But if we don't annex them now, and we come back later and annex them later, after there's many, many property owners, and it doesn't, it doesn't even matter about how many property owners. Once the houses are built, the impact fees will be paid. We can't build fire stations, we can't pay for roads, we can't have anything under our control unless the city collects those impact fees and ha- plays a role in how they're distributed. So those impact fees can go anywhere in the whole entire county, if they're collected in the county. But if they are annexed prior to pulling building permits, which is what the agreement currently says that they have to do, then we have the... currently says that they have to do, then we have the authority to have a say-so in how those impact fees, parks, recreation, the school district will determine how they spend their own money, but mobility fees, all of those things will then be able to be negotiated in how they're used by the city, which we wouldn't control if we do it after the fact.
So, important for us as citizens to remember that annexation sometimes sounds horrible, but it could impact, impact fees that will go to county instead of our city's control.
Yes, exactly.
Now, I do have another question. Findings, so number two of the findings, the question is, the proposed change would create an isolated district unrelated to adjacent and nearby districts. Now, realizing it says districts, but would this not create an isolated area of the county with the properties that you spoke of that are sort of mixed in the middle of the area that we're proposing to annex into the city?
Would leaving those counties out of, those properties out of this annexation create isolated districts? Is that what you're asking me?
I don't think it would create isolated districts, per se, but it would be isolated properties, I guess you could say.
Right.
So, the terminology there is, obviously.
As you can see by the map, and it's a little small on the screen, sorry about that, having it zoom in, but the boundaries are kind of notched in, out, there's chunks in here that aren't part of it, there's chunks in here that aren't part of it. And so, no, we did not deem that it was creating areas that, essentially, the point of the statutory guidance on annexation is you're not keeping one little chunk out there where the county has to go out there and respond to their 911 calls, and the service time would be so extreme, and they would be so isolated that...
Right. So, because of the interlocal agreement, that would not be a concern?
We have interlocal agreements regarding, you know, provision of fire and, and emergency services, so we can serve each other, and then they pay each other behind the scenes, I think. But in this case, there is so much more county around here that they're already out there serving a lot of land, and we're just kind of eating into it. So, and we're starting to propose to kind of spread that way. Those six parcels in particular on Kissimmee Park Road, I don't think are so isolated that the provision of services to them would be unreasonable. So, so no, we did not deem it not contiguous or reasonably compact.
Understood. Thank you. Does anybody else have a public comment to make? Anybody else from the audience? Okay, at this time, we will close the public comment session, and then would anybody else from the planning commission like to discuss this further? I guess I, I just want to state that I think that this is, overall, the concept plan is good, in the sense that it's mixed-use district, and the overall idea, I believe, is to have a mixture of your housing, commercial, civic spaces such as parks and things like that. So, I think the overall concept is good. However, what concerns me, as I said earlier, is the, the number of different developers, and how do we make sure that each one is sort of, you know, playing by the rules and doing what they should be doing? And then my other large concern is just the interconnectivity, that right now, we only have one lane in, one lane out. And understanding that approving this, or I'm sorry, disapproving this, just means that the county is going to move forward anyway. But in my opinion, I think that we need to establish some sort of guidelines for creating those, those interconnected roads, the two that are shown going into the Tohokua Development, you know, understanding if the turnpike is going to have some sort of, you know, temporary interchange or something like that. And because none of that is established, I don't feel comfortable approving this to be annexed in the city of St. Cloud. At this time.
Thank you.
So, I would like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-13, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Ms. Grigsby?
Is that wrong?
No. I just want to clarify, on your motion, the recommendation for staff was that it be the, it would be conditional approval with the conditions that were identified.
Correct. With the conditions.
The school board condition and also the updated legal description.
The updated legal description.
Are those conditions included in your motion?
Yes, sir. Included in my motion are those two conditions.
Thank you very much.
I second.
All right. Call for a vote. All that are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. It's a no for me.
The recommendation is approved with the conditions as specified by Minister, with the school board condition and the updated legal description.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-14.
Sorry, I presented them already, but you need to take separate action.
Right. Exactly.
Ready for the land use component and the...
Yes, so this is, I don't, sorry, Edgewater Future Land Use Map Amendment, large-scale DRC, DRC Case Number CPA 21-00025.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022, I'm sorry, did you say 15? I was going 14.
14.
It's 14. It's 14. Okay, sorry, I thought I heard 5. 2022-14, and to transmit Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for intergracy review based on 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
And the condition.
And the conditions recommended by staff for the schools and the property, updated property.
Updated legal.
Legal description.
Correct.
Thank you.
I second.
All right, I have a second. This time, we'd like to hold a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, that motion passes 3 to 1.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-15, also Edgewater Zoning Map Amendment, DRC Case ZMA 21-00014.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-15, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code, and allowing for the conditions recommended by staff for school and updated...
From the school board and...
School board and updated...
Updated legal description.
Legal description. Thank you.
I second.
All right, we have a second. This time, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And no for me.
Okay, passes 3 to 1. Okay.
All right. Next item is ordinance number 2022-45, Michigan Avenue, 10 acres, zoning map amendment, DRC Case ZMA 22-00005.
Good evening, board members. I'm Tisha Manning, Associate Planner in Community Development. I'm going to present to you the zoning map amendment for the Michigan Avenue 10 acres, which is approximately 9.5, 9.59 acres of land, which is west of Michigan Avenue, east of Indiana, north of Nolte, and south of Cody Allen Road. The proposed future land use is low-density residential, with a current zoning right now is agricultural and RE, which is single-family dwellings. The proposed zoning is R1B, single-family dwelling. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and proposes no adverse impacts on city facilities. It is in alignment with our strategic plan goal of growth management. Staff did review this case on or about July, June 10 of 2022, and we recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-45, and likewise, ask the same of the planning commission. My applicant is available, and staff is also available for any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Askewe. Don Hewie with Askewe, 25 East 13th Street, Suite 9, St. Cloud, 34769.
Thank you.
Just, we're the authorized agent for the applicant, and we would just like to say that we agree with the staff's recommendation for approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
Do you have any sort of master plan for this area yet, or anything that we could view, or, or not yet?
Not yet. Creating a master plan at this point, spending the dollars for the developers...
Right.
Probably not make good sense.
Understand.
We did do a conceptual plan that yielded 32 single-family lots, 62 and 1/2 foot wide by 120 feet deep, which is a minimum 7,500 square foot lot width required by the city. And it yielded 32 lots, although that was very preliminary, with no grading taken into account or anything like that to achieve grading back down to the adjacent properties. So, we're in the 30 lot range, but it's just nothing's been set in stone yet.
Thank you. I guess I have a question for city staff. Is this area currently, it looks like half of it is zoned currently as RE, and the other half is currently zoned agricultural? Or is that, am I reading that incorrectly?
That is correct. Part of it is zoned RE, and part of it is zoned agricultural. So, the RE is the part that is shown here on the zoning map that is yellow, and agricultural is the part that is shown in green.
And it's adjacent to other RE zoning?
Correct.
Does anybody else have any questions for city staff? Okay, at this time, we'd like to allow for public comment. And we have Timothy Kraus. Hopefully, I said that correctly.
Yes, sir, it is.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Tim Kraus. I live at 806 West New Nolte Road, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769, with my parents, Merle and Gene Kraus. My dad, Merle, owns the big, square, green agricultural just to the south there of this 10 acres. We moved here when I was nine. The Michigan Avenue Elementary School that was just turned down was brand new when I entered fourth grade there. My parents are 90 and 91. They still live in their home. I live with them to help make that possible. Dad was going to come, but he wanted to fish in the pond, which he does every evening till dark, and that pond's a few feet from where this development is proposed. Unlike some of my fellow citizens who are well-read on development, I was not. I spoke with Ms. Manning on the phone this morning, and if I understand correctly, the proposed amendment would give a legal pathway for Victoria-quality homes to go from the present zoning of maybe being able to build 10 to 15 homes on 10 acres to being, I heard this evening, to being able to build up to 30 homes. Our neighborhood, again, I'm not knowledgeable on development, but just eyeballing it, I'd say our neighborhood is pretty much all single homes on more than one acre. It's an agricultural culture where we live. We've been there a half-century. And, you know, I look at the historic St. Cloud neighborhood from 10th Street to the lakefront. You know, that's been kept the way it was in 1973, and that culture is a part of the unique character of the city of St. Cloud. The developers don't bring that vision. I drove around with my parents. There's hundreds of homes being built just to the north of us in the Sky Lakes Estates from St. Cloud High School up to about half a mile from our home. Lenar Homes has a couple developments. My mom and I pass in the morning about a mile from our home, another 150 new homes. Estates at Southern Pines is less than a mile from our house, hundreds of homes going in there. Canopy Reserve, 50 homes were built a few years ago. And I read in the paper, Rowan Bridge Development will bring 700 new homes within three miles of our house. And my request to you all is that you be visionaries for those of us who live there now. I understood from Ms. Manning that the comprehensive plan of the city sees all this area near Nolte as a main thoroughfare, as a place to develop housing. But there are historic neighborhoods that have unique character and quality of life. And, you know, the phone calls we get from time to time by people who want to buy our house with cash money don't have a vision for quality of life. And I just hope you all keep that in mind, that there is an existing culture that goes back a half-century with our family and our neighbors. It's an agricultural type of environment, and there's plenty of other compact developments going on in our area, and maybe some parts, some neighborhoods should be protected from some of that, and we'd, we'd like to see that. And the other concern we have is, is our pond. It's slower than it's ever been. I know we're short on rain, but our well that we used to irrigate with started spitting sand instead of water a few years ago. I guess that's a price of progress, but sustainability, quality of life, it's really you guys that are the visionaries, and so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to speak? At this time, we will close the public comment session. Do we have any questions from the planning commission board?
Well, just curious, can, I don't know, staff or applicant can say, is there any way to protect some development from this pond or the area that they own?
I will say that the city does require buffers around the edges of development, and I'm sure that those buffers, I'm positive those buffers will be obtained and retained for the development. Again, this is just the zoning ZMA tonight, where development is, is a pie in the sky idea at this point, conceptually. So, I'm sure when that, when that time comes, that the developer and staff will have a keen eye for keeping those that are remaining in the area and doesn't, don't want to develop to keep their house and their home as pristine as it has been in the past.
Let me ask you while you're up here, speaking conceptually, of course, do you anticipate that there could possibly be a road connecting Michigan to Indiana through this subdivision?
The city's code does require connectivity, and yes, that possibility is there, again, conceptually. We have shown a connection, but we haven't, haven't looked into anything in depth, but city, city code does require connectivity. And in fact, during the pre-application meeting for the ZMA, it was mentioned that they would prefer connectivity between Indiana and Michigan Avenue.
Thank you. And then for scale, to get an idea of scale, what is the dimension north to south of this proposed annexation?
This is a zoning map amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, zoning map amendment.
Yeah. So, conceptually, again, using a tax map, I don't even have a full survey at the moment, but using, using a tax map with the required buffers, 70 plus 240, so we're 3-something, 300-something feet from north to south.
Okay. Thank you. So, at this time, we'll close the public comment session. Anything else we have for staff?
Well, staff, how will that road impact the number or the, I don't know, just the layout of that complex? Is that, that road that has to go through?
Okay, well...
Okay, well, at the time that a site development plan is presented to the city staff, we do take into consideration connectivity. So, we're gonna look at, you know, any type of connectivity that can go through there, as well as, you know, making sure that they're meeting the site, you know, the site requirements. So, it could impact what the developer is able to build, if it is determined that they have to provide that infrastructure.
Any other comments, questions? At this time, I'd like to call for a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number, make sure I've got the right one, 2022-45, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code, but I would also like to request that staff and applicant at least consider the surroundings with the residents there when they're developing.
A second.
All right, so we have a second. Now, we'll hold a vote. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
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 Pass is 4-0.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-46, Hickory Creek Zoning Map Amendment, DRC Case ZMA 22-00006.
Good evening again. Tisha Manning, Associate Planner for Community Development. I will be reading the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the ZMA together. Were both of those read into the record?
I'm sorry?
The Comprehensive Plan and the Zoning Map Amendment, were they both read into the record?
She's asking for agenda items, H and I, to be read in together, to be presented at one time. Is that correct, Ms. Manning?
Correct.
Yeah, I only read in the zoning map amendment.
Could you please read in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment?
Yes. So, also, ordinance number 2022-47, Hickory Creek Comprehensive Plan Amendment, DRC Case CPA 22-00005.
Thank you. So, tonight, I'm gonna present the Comprehensive Plan and the Zoning Map Amendment together, and those are ordinance 2022-47 and 2022-46. It affects approximately 13.9 acres of land located south of Highway, west, I'm sorry, south of Highway 192, west of Old Hickory Tree Road, north of Nolte, and east of Orange Avenue. The existing future land use is low-density residential with the existing zoning of R1B single-family dwelling. The proposed future land use is medium-density residential with the proposed zoning of R3 multifamily dwelling. It is compatible with the surrounding area and has no adverse impact on city facilities. And if you can see here on the future land use map to the left, the property just north of where the request is taking place is already zoned as R3 multifamily dwelling, and high-density residential is the future land use. So, you'll see that as well on the zoning map to the right. You'll see that the property, again, just to the north, is already zoned R3. And the property to the west of that is a mixed-use development. This is in alignment with the strategic plan goal of growth management. Staff has reviewed these requests and recommend approval of ordinance 2022-46, as well as ordinance 20-22-47, and we ask that the Planning Commission recommend approval as well.
So, I have a question about, where was the area you said was mixed-use, or?
High-density. Let me go back?
The high-density.
No, that was to the north. What was to the?
To the west.
To the west.
Mm-hmm. The property to the west is mixed-use.
Okay. I was just looking for that on the map. Thank you.
You're welcome. And staff is available for any questions, as well as I believe the applicant is.
While you're here, the area to the north that is already zoned as medium-density, right?
Correct. No, the area to the north is actually zoned high-density residential.
What is, is there anything there currently?
No. It was, it was zone R3, I believe, in my research, I believe it was in 2017. I'm not exactly sure. I can't remember the exact year, for multifamily apartment complex.
And do you know, did the applicant that got that zoning changed, have they done anything since that?
We don't currently have any plans submitted to the city.
Okay.
Is that just across from the park? There's a city park there. Am I thinking in the right direction, the high-density?
I'm not exactly sure.
And can you clarify R3, what that allows for as far as number of units, building height, that sort of thing?
So, medium-density residential is 4.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre, and I believe the maximum building height is 35 feet. But I will double-check that.
What's that equated to? Three floors?
Three floors.
Yeah. Anybody else have questions for staff at this time? Okay, at this time, we would like to allow for public comment. Does anybody in the public have any comments on this, on these two particular cases, ordinances? Okay, if there is no public comment, we will close the public comment session at this time. Does anybody else from the Planning Commission have any other questions or comments? So, I'm questioning whether this is really appropriate. I mean, understanding that the property to the north is already zoned as, what is it?
High-density.
It's high-density, so it's, but it's still R3?
It's, yes, it's R3.
Yeah, so, understanding that, but there's nothing currently there, or any plans to put anything there, I just feel like this is a little bit out of place to, you know, proposing a three-story apartment complex, if you will. Not saying that's what they're proposing, but that would be what they would be allowed to do. I mean, is the applicant here? The applicant's not here? Would you like to elaborate on the plans for this parcel?
Sure. Again, Don Hewie with Askewe, 25 East 13th Street, Suite 9, St. Cloud, 34769. We are the authorized agent for the applicant. The proposed development would be townhomes and two-story only. We don't want to get into some crazy additional bedrooms that require parking, additional parking. So, it would be two-story only for this. And I might add that there is mixed-use to the west, which is also gonna include single-family and townhomes, presumably. And the high-density to the north, obviously, is high-density for a reason, although there may not be anything there today. There could be something there in six or eight months.
Understood. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion. Would you like to make a motion, anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-46, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Would it need to be both, since we've?
One at a time.
One case at a time.
Okay.
A second?
Okay, so we have a second. At this time, we will hold a vote. All, or I'm sorry, all approve?
Aye.
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 It's a no for me.
Dr. Revere, did you, how did you vote on this?
Aye.
Voted aye? Okay, thank you. So, pass is 3-1. Motion passes 3-1.
Okay, and then, ordinance number 2022-47, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Do I have a motion to approve on that one?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-47, and to transmit to Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for inter-agency review based on 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
A second.
All right, we have a second. At this time, we'll hold a vote. All that approve?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a no for me.
Motion passes 3-1.
All right, next agenda item is ordinance number 2022-48, 5700 Nova Road. This is a voluntary annexation, DRC Case ANX22-00004.
Good evening. Tisha Manning, Community Development Associate Planner. This is for a voluntary annexation of about, approximately 12.313 acres of land located generally east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, and north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard. This land is contiguous and reasonably compact, and there is a, and it abuts the city limits on the eastern property boundary. The existing county future land use is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is agricultural development and conservation. This is in alignment with our strategic plan goals of growth management.
Bless you.
And the city has reviewed this voluntary annexation and recommends approval of ordinance 2022-48, and likewise, we ask the same of the Planning Commission. Staff is available for any questions, as well as I believe the applicant is available as well.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, everyone. John Porter, 1003 Flora Avenue, with Ossile Engineering, representing the applicant, and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
What are you gonna do with it?
Yeah, so, currently, the owner doesn't have any plans, specific plans for development. How this kind of came about was the city got with a company called Air Methods, who's looking to do an emergency helicopter pad to serve the citizens of St. Cloud, and Mr. Rocker was approached for that use on this property, and that's kind of what started this process. Of course, to develop on the property, you have to go through the annexation processes, which is why we're here today.
So, that is why it's requesting, why you're requesting aye too then, right? Because that is the necessary zoning designation for that type of use?
Yeah, staff may be able to speak to that specifically, I'm sure. I think it's conditional use for the helicopter pad in a couple different zoning districts.
We're not hearing those cases at this time. They're gonna be, to be continued to the 816 Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, this is purely for the annexation, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, does anybody have any other questions for the staff, for the applicant? At this time, we would like to allow for public comment. Does anyone from the public have any comments? If there are no comments, we will close the public comment session. And once again, does anyone from the board have a question or comment?
Sounds like a nice thing to do.
Okay, at this time, we'll call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-48, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
A second.
All right, we have a second, so we will hold a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Of approval?
Aye.
Pass is 4-0. Just for clarification, I think Ms. Manning indicated that ordinance 202249 and 202250 were gonna be continued over to the August 16th Planning Commission meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then, we will move on to our next case, which is ordinance number 2022-42, which is the Walker Property Voluntary Annexation, DRC Case ANX22-00002.
Can you also please read the consecutive Comprehensive Plan Amendment case as well?
Yes. And then, also, ordinance number 2022-43, Walker Property Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which is DRC Case CPA 22-00002.
Thank you. Again, Tisha Manning, Associate Planner in Community Development, and the case that I'm presenting tonight is an annexation and a comprehensive plan for approximately 25.459 acres. I would like to correct for the record that the notice for the public hearing went out, and it stated 42.457 acres. That has since then been corrected and verified, and it is truly only 29.59 acres. That is located south of Chisen Park Trail, west of South Narcousi Road, and north of Old Oak Trail.
So, I have to ask you, I mean, that's quite a difference. We're talking over 12 acres, or around 12 acres. What was?
Just the, just the wrong number entered, so.
Okay, so it was a misprint?
Correct.
A Scrivener's there?
Yeah. Yes.
All right, fair enough.
The property is contiguous and reasonably compact. It is adjacent to city limits and abuts the city limits on the western property boundary, which is actually Chisen Park. The existing county future land use is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is R1, RS-1C, and AC, which are urban settlement, rural settlement, rural settlement, and agricultural and development and conservation. The proposed future land use is low-density residential with the proposed zoning of RB, single-family dwelling. The development is compatible with the surrounding area and poses no adverse impact on city facilities. This is the location map to show you where the property is located, and it does abut Chisen Park right to the west. The future land use shows that the property in the county is low-density residential with all of those zonings that I previously stated. I also would like to point out that all of the properties surrounding this property is still in the county, and the only city property would be Chisen Park. This is in alignment with our strategic plan goal of growth management, and staff has reviewed this application for annexation and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We do recommend approval and ask that the Planning Commission likewise recommend approval. City staff is available for any questions, as well as the applicant is available.
Thank you. Applicant, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. John Adams, RJ Withden Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee, Florida. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation for the annexation and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We do wish to discuss the zoning when that comes up at the appropriate time. I can defer discussion. I can defer discussion. I understand there may be public comment, and I do want to confirm it was a Scrivener's error on our part in our application, but the legal description was correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions? For staff or the applicant?
Why do you want to annex?
Because your CPA requires us to. It's adjacent to city limits.
Adjacent to the?
It's adjacent to City Park, which is now within the city. And the, the joint planning agreement requires that all properties adjacent to the city limits that are being served with water and sewer from St. Cloud first come to the city of St. Cloud for annexation, and then the comprehensive plan amendment is because of the change in jurisdiction. And the zoning is because of the change in jurisdiction. So it's based on your CPA, or JPA, excuse me.
So does this area already have any water and sewer in place?
I'm not certain of that, but when development occurs, we will have to extend it in from potentially Narcusi Road. Narcusi Road has water and sewer. And will be required by ordinance to extend it.
So the request not only is for annexation, but you're seeking a future land use designation of low-density residential as well, right?
Yes. And that's just based on the change in jurisdiction. We're currently low-density residential, we're requesting city low-density residential because of the change in jurisdiction.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? All right, so at this time, we will allow for public comment, and we have some people that have submitted requests to speak. First one I have here is Brian Bennett. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Brian Bennett, I'm at eleven twenty-five Albany, I'm directly across the street from the, the proposed property. One thing really quick before we get started, there is some sewer that is, that is in place in that, in that community across Chisholm Park. Although, when we moved in, we asked about joining up to the, the city sewer that is in that neighborhood already, and it was communicated to us at that time that it is already underserved for the community that's there. And all of the lines would have to be replaced if there were additional homes that were going to be added into the, into the sewer system going out of the Chisholm Park development. So, just as a point of clarification, there, there is some, some city water and some city sewer there, and it is, it is currently under you guys' communication. It's undersized for the number of homes and the number of people that are living in that community already. So there would have to be some additional infrastructure that went in for that. My son is the one that was, that was in here, and he's part of the reason why I'm in here as well. When we moved into this community, we, we met with some of the neighbors, we've got good friends with, with almost everyone who is in here. Everyone knows my son. He's, he's an elopement risk from our home. And, and with that, he tries to escape all the time. He is between two months and, and nineteen months, depending on when his last seizure was mentally. And he really just wants to, to, to explore, but he has no, he has no sense of fear. Adding in additional homes in the property in the neighborhood would put him at significant risk with the amount of traffic that would come with, with those homes being added. Additionally, the, the schools right now that service the homes in that area is, is Narcusi Elementary and Narcusi Middle School, as well as Harmony High School. We routinely have our son get rejected from the bus, as well as the rest of the residents who are in that neighborhood, because there isn't adequate busing currently to be able to service the schools there. And so the parents carpool children to get them to school, because the buses show up and there simply aren't seats available on the bus. The, the school district doesn't have a plan to remedy that, they haven't had enough drivers, nor do they have enough equipment to service that. And so addition of, of additional homes into the neighborhood would, would cause additional problems. We already have some significant weekend traffic from boating that goes in and out of the neighborhood going to Chisholm Park. We also have church service that takes place on Sundays at the park that brings in a significant number of additional cars. But the, the entrance to get on and off of Narcusi is, is single entrance to your, to your point before already. None of the other roads that go out of that neighborhood are actually paved. Some of them have, some, some community members have added crushed recycled asphalt into them, but none of the rest of the, the roads are formally paved going in and out of those neighborhoods. And, and my house actually sits on a dirt road back in there. It, it is a significant change to the neighborhood to go in and add additional homes, particularly given the, the agricultural and the rural area that, that is back in there. It's not simply just addition of, of existing property back in there, this would be a huge, significant change to add those homes. To add additional retention basins that would be required to do additional development to, to add property back in there would, would, again, for, for my selfishness, would put my son at further risk. Because if and when he does get out, autistic children are drawn to water, to bring another water body that's gonna be close to our, our house would, would significantly put him at risk of drowning. It's, it's already agricultural in that area. We've got donkeys and horses and chickens across the street that are currently in, in Mr. Addison's property that is, that is part of this. But it is, it is definitely not a, it is not a, a residential area. There's pulp trees that have been placed in, in one section. If, if we're going to change the zoning, we should go back and, and ask for them to return all of the, the tax abatement that they've gotten for it to be in agricultural, rather than allow them to just take the lower taxes for the last few years, and then, and turn around and sell it as a, as a, as a development community. It, it definitely does not fit into our community in that little neighborhood. Even, even when we moved in, we, we stopped by that house at Addison's, and I said, I've got, I asked him specifically, I said, I've got two different houses I'm looking at. I really like to, to stay in the country, I want this to be a rural environment to raise my children in. And I, I openly asked him if he was planning on, on selling to a developer, because I liked the view looking into his fields and into his, his pastures with his horses. And he said that, at, at that time, he indicated that there, there wasn't a plan currently, and this has only been two years ago, to, to change it over to a residential development. So it, it would be very disappointing and disheartening, at least to my family, to have this move into a, into a, a more dense community with a, with a higher density of homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask city staff to address the comment about the condition of the water and sewer? Is there any indication that the water and sewer there is in, in any way dilapidated, or have any issues currently? Meaning, or, or yeah, the sizing of it isn't even insufficient, or? So in other words, I guess what would, what would need to happen to the, as far as water and sewer to serve that?
Yeah, Dagmar Segara, Planning, Planning Manager. That review is going to be conducted by Utilities Department, which is part of Work, Public Works Department, and it's gonna be conducted during the preliminary subdivision plan and subdivision construction plan. If there is any improvements that the developer had required to make, such as increasing the sizes of the path, the lines and all of that, that will be at that moment that the Public Works Department Utilities will, will communicate that, and it will become a requirement in order to get the subdivision approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can we just though, address that, I thought it was the statement was that the current residents there were not able to connect because it was not sufficient?
That's correct.
And at the time of the subdivision comes in and the review, they will have to make the upgrades in order to make it fit.
Right, but if, let, let's say apart from that, I guess my question is that without this new development, those that were there seem to indicate that they were not permitted to connect to city sewer.
I believe that at the, previously, everything that surrounds the property is the county, and if the, if the property was, is not contiguous to the city, we would not make the recommendation of providing the services.
It, it just sounded more, so I, I guess my recommendation and ask as, as part of the commission would be, can we look into why past residents who were there were told that it was already insufficient to support them? Just to get, to answer that question, I'd like to address that for them. Yeah, it, it has really nothing to do with this new development, it's like also my question about the past, so just to.
All right, so Brian Bennett, I have two here, is that because there was two different cases and?
Yeah, it was, I was, I was unsure.
Okay.
That they would all come through under the same.
I got you, yep, understood.
And just, one more.
Yeah, could you please come up to the mic? Thank you.
One, one more item for the record, I just, somewhat of an objection to this being an open meeting, when we got here today, the doors were locked. The meeting started before most of the people here were able to enter and, and come in. There were people that additionally wanted to come, who were turned away because the doors were locked and they weren't willing to wait outside in the heat. So just, just as a, a comment on the, the procedural portion of this meeting, it wasn't, it wasn't completely open to the public, given that the doors were locked.
The doors were locked, at what time were you referring to, sir?
It was, the doors, the police officer let us in after six P M.
Doors have, doors have been open since fi- at five fifteen, Ryan entered the building.
The, the doors were locked when we got here.
Depends on which door you're referring to, sir.
The door at the?
We, we sent people all the way around, every door when we got here was locked.
The main door that's marked city, or entrance for the city hall.
Yes, but we sent, we sent somebody, Greg walked around the building, looked for unlocked doors, every door when we got here was locked.
I, I will say that when I arrived, the door that is in between, you know, this side and the other side, it was, it was a little bit difficult to open it.
There is a, there is an issue with the back door catching, it is open, but it takes an extra tug.
So.
Right, I did, I did notice that.
Your objections are noted for the commission, sir, this has been publicly noticed, and this particular series of cases did not begin until about eight thirty or eight fifteen this evening, so.
I, I understand that, Mr. Morgenson, but, but again, there were people who intended to come to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Who, who gave up because, because the doors were locked. And, and whether it's that there was difficulty and it takes a significant amount of force to open the doors, I'm a big guy. I, I pulled pretty briskly on the doors, and they didn't open.
I appreciate your feedback's been noted for the record, but we cannot proceed, and we'll take, your, your comments are noted. Those that chose to, to, to not come, you know, that's gonna, they, they can make themselves heard at a future time. This is gonna be heard again, by the way, two more hearings before city council, those dates again, Ms. Light? I believe once in August and once in October.
The first reading is August eleventh, and the second reading, the final hearing, is September eighth.
September eighth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I also have Jackie.
Freakyoni.
Freakyoni.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, I, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I live at forty-eight seventy-two Chisholm Park Trail, and good evening, Planning Commission. I have lived there for twenty-two years now, we built our home back in two thousand and two. This small neighborhood is very rare and unique, we have very few houses there. But the majority of our neighborhood are half-acre to one-acre home sites. The same applies to our neighbors at Runny Meat Oaks, who are half-acre to one-acre home sites. This rural area of home sites were established many years ago, some twenty to thirty years ago. That is the attraction that we get that brings in the people and the home buyers into the Narcusi area. From Lake AJ to Majestic Oaks, from Mill Stream Phase One and Two, to Waterside Vista, to East Lake Reserve, to Chisholm Park, and Runny Meat Oaks. Don't forget Ralph Miller, Underwood, and Jack Brackroad. These are all half-acre, multi-acre home sites. This is what makes Narcusi a very unique area. With our future preservation of these unique home sites, it is, all we are asking you guys to do in the planning commission is to support and protect what we already have existing there at these home sites in our area, and at Chisholm Park Trail and Chisholm Park. The Walker property itself is actually only twenty point six five acres, and that is according to the property appraisal database. In addition, there is four point nine six acres that are involved in this case that is owned by a total different party. The majority of the acres back up directly to Ralph V. Chisholm Park. This is the city's duty to maintain and preserve this park that was given to them by Ralph V. Chisholm for generations to come. The small area that Mr. Walker is trying to change the zoning on is not appropriate for the LDR rating in our community of existing home sites. The neighbors in the neighborhood, our park, and to change the current land use to an LDR, R one B zoning, is not appropriate for that area. With all common sense and all the negative impact that that would bring to our small neighborhood of established home sites, not even to mention the traffic issue that everybody has been talking about at this meeting that is coming to the Narcusi area. We all know that Center Lake Ranch has already started. Jones Road subdivisions are massive, Cyrus Road massive, and many other that are already coming and not completed development and are under construction currently on Narcusi Road. These are going to extremely impact Narcusi Road traffic and the park traffic due to our park being public. All we are asking you guys for is to maintain something that is already existing and established throughout the Narcusi corridor. Half-acre to one-acre home sites is what we want to continue in this area. No LDR, there is no reason to change the zoning. Several people in this neighborhood have been speaking to Mr. Walker for four to six years, and have offered to buy that property to keep it as is. There are already large-scale LDR approved or pending approved on the Narcusi Road. So we are asking you to protect what we already have, and we are asking you to protect what the adjoining homeowners already have, and not to support this request for the Walker property. We have seen, and we all know, that St. Cloud and Narcusi are growing fast, but we all have to play a part in this of controlling the type of growth we get, and to stop the growth that we do not want. We all also have to be responsible for the quality of homes in our area, not the quantity of homes. This LDR request will have adverse impact to Chisholm Park and the Chisholm Park residences. And can I say one other thing? Brian's son, when they moved in, they did. Brian's son, when they moved in, they did take a lot of consideration with his son. And since they've lived there, he has gotten out quite a few times, including through our property, down Chisholm Park Trail, heading to Narcoussi Road. Luckily, we all intercepted him. That LDR, four houses per acre, is I think what Mr. Addison is wanting, that would destroy the peacefulness that they have right now, and the surrounding neighbors have. We're not opposed to houses, but you need to put half acre homesites, that continues the existing surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Linda Hewitt? Is she still here? Yeah, yeah, I think we can do that. Sandra Jennings? Please state your name and your address for the record, thank you.
My name's Sandra Jennings, address 1135 Albany Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, 34771. And I've, my property, two sides of my property is directly adjacent to the timber property that's 10 acres on one side, and then the Addison Walkers, 10 acres on the west side of my property. So I've got two sides, and my property is four and a half acres, and it is only, it would back up to Narcoussi Road, with the exception there's a one acre thin and long, the entire length of my property, that's about 30 feet wide between Narcoussi Road and the back of my property. So my concerns, of course, is the quality of the neighborhood, I've lived there for about 23 years, and having close to, the whole five acres is, is, the only reason why the property was cleared off is because of the house that is built on that five acres. And the rest of it is in nature, just the, the trees that have been there originally are the rest of the property. So to, you know, clear off all of the property next to me on both, on two sides of my property, and put in that many houses, my biggest concern is the traffic that that would cause, there is, it's right now, to get to my property, we're on a dead end rock road, so the only way out of my property is Albany Avenue, northbound to Chisholm, and then Chisholm out to Narcoussi Road. So the, the traffic right now, when the Chisholm Estates subdivision was put in, that increased the traffic drastically. When the city annexed the Chisholm Park, right there on the lakefront, that increased the, the traffic tremendously, going up and down, because there is no other access to get out of any of that property except Chisholm Park, going out to Narcoussi Road. So it's, it's gotten to the point now, that the traffic on Narcoussi Road, at, at rush hour traffic, it becomes almost impossible to even turn northbound or southbound onto Narcoussi Road. And I am concerned about the volume of houses that you're adding into that same flow of traffic. And the speed of the, of the traffic coming from the park, it's approximately half mile in distance, and by the time the, the cars starting down at the lakefront, come past Albany Avenue and get up to Narcoussi Road, I mean, I've seen cars on a consistent basis, 40 and 50 mile an hour, which makes it really a, I consider that a dangerous situation, because we have school buses dropping children for that, the whole area and neighborhood, all those children get off of the school bus right on Narcoussi Road and Chisholm Park. And we're talking elementary school children, all the way up through definitely the middle school. And there are no sidewalks on Chisholm Park Road, so these children are walking in the middle of the road. Elementary school children standing on the edge of Narcoussi Road is, I consider that a danger, I, I see parents from the Chisholm Estates pulling their cars up to the edge of the, on the other side of the road where, from where the children are standing, I see children running back and forth between the parents' cars and the, where they're standing for the bus stop. I had one elementary school child, at one time, came running across, wasn't even paying attention, and just ran into the side of my car, fortunately, I saw this, you know, I always just kind of creep through that area, if I have any reason that I need to, to go through there during the school hours. And so that, like I said, with adding that many houses, you know you're going to have a lot of extra children being put into that same situation of where is, where's the school bus stops going to be? There's, there's no other way out of the area except through Narcoussi Roads, I, I just consider, think that that's something that we need to take some real good look at, and make plans before that development is allowed to go forth. Other concerns, you know, back to similar things that Jackie was talking about, is, you know, with being on a, a piece of property that's basically five acres, and it's, and it's still in woods, we have gopher turtles continuously on the property, I mean, even when I drive into my property, I'm constantly looking because the turtles, they just, you know, they go wherever they, their territory is, and so they cross my driveway, getting into the garage area, if I wasn't really paying attention, that would be easy to, to run over a turtle. I've seen turtles that have their, 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 the holes that they dig, right along the fence line on the property where the timber, the pines are, are located. So, you know, I've had deer in my backyard, I mean, I'm talking recent, within the last six months, I've seen deer, just two days ago, I had four wild turkeys, you know, walking across my property, like I said, the gopher turtles, which are protected. I have one other concern, that, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to be discussing it, but the property that is going south from my house, which is where the, the pines are planted, that property, kind of, that's the lowest spot on my property, and I'm concerned if they build, you know, like, cut down all the pines and then level the property, that that's going to put water flowing down onto my property. So drainage is an issue that I would be concerned about, my property also has wetland, so that's very, you know, within two or three acres of the property that's going to be developed, has wetland on it. So I think all of those issues should be considered when, before the development is actually approved. And so that's, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do have a question for staff. Should I do public comment first, or can I ask staff?
Well, it, it's usually best to let the public have the opportunity to speak, and then you can come back.
Okay, all right, so Sandra, would you like to speak as well? Sandra Jennings?
I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, Linda Hu- Linda Hewitt, we're back to you, sorry, thank you.
My name is Linda Hewitt, 1135 Albany Avenue, Sandra is my sister, and we share the home. I moved up just before 9/11/2001. In 2000, we tripled the size of the home, because we had our parents living with us, and another sister, and children. At that time, the county required five acres, they were strict rules in terms of size of how close we have a cottage. And what, what you're looking at now is, I don't think it's even four homes, I think they're looking for more like five, substantially changing that property. The concerns that Sandy mentioned about children, the school buses, the kids aren't walking on the side of the road, we're talking seven year olds, six year olds, eight year olds, they're walking down the middle of the road. You're going to see fatality, you're going to see injured children, we're lucky that when the kid rode, ran into her car, the side of her car, Sandy had come to a complete stop, so he ran into the side of a car that was stopped. Obviously, we're right next to the property on one side, and along the front, so we're going to have increased noise, population, transportation issues, taxes, there's just so many issues, and as Jackie said, this is so different, it is going to harm the community, that is not the community that's in that area. So I really hope that you will consider this, we're not adverse to homes, but I personally would like to see one acre homes, bigger homes, improve the area, don't run it down. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, this time, does anybody else from the public would like to speak?
Can I say something?
Yes, can you please come up to the microphone? And just state your name and address again for the record.
Again, okay, Jackie Freakyoni, 4872 Chisholm Park Trail, I live right on Chisholm Park, the park, the, the road that goes to the park, I have two driveway entrances, so just so you guys know where I live, I'm like, I'm the closest to Narcoussi Road. I had six other couples here that were located on Chisholm Park and Chisholm Estates at the very beginning of the meeting, and they all got up and left, because it was taking, I guess, longer than what they could stay, their kids were out of school, they came to speak on this. So I'm a little upset that they did not stay, but what I would like to say is, this really, you guys or anybody, before you make a decision on this, I wish I would have brought you photographs, I had no idea there was a way to show you our existing neighborhood, and Mr. Addison Walker's property, because it is not set up to put any type of LDR. Four houses, or five houses on an acre, are absolutely going to devastate that street that they live on with their child, that we all look out for, and they just moved in two years ago, it is not fair to make these people move again, because Mr. Addison was asked directly from every one of us, if you ever decide to sell, come do all of us first. And that was just recently. So take that into consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? At this time, we will close public comment session. I do have a question for city staff, and I understand that this is not one of the resolutions we're currently looking at, because we've only read in 2022-42 and 43. But I was looking at the other ordinance, 2022-44, and it talks about the amendment from R1 RS-1CAC, Urban Settlement, Rural Settlement, Agricultural Development and Conservation County to R1B Single Family. So my, well, my question is, is what is, or what part of this area is considered conservation? What portion of it?
Well, agricultural conservation doesn't.
Or is that just a blanket term for the, that zoning in the county?
That's a blanket term that the county uses, it's still, it doesn't mean that it's not developable, it's still developable, it's just their agriculture, they have different zoning designations, just as we do, so it's still a single family development, even in the county. And I do want to make a clarification, because they keep speaking to the low density residential being a change. Low density residential, the property is currently zoned low density residential, right now, in the county. Under the county zoning designation of low density residential, it is eight.
Future.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, future land use, sorry, future land use, it gives you a maximum dwelling units per acre of eight. So under the city future land use of low density residential, our maximum dwelling units per acre is only four. So even though it's going from low density residential, future land use county, to low density future land use city, the dwelling units per acre will decrease.
That's an important distinction, I think.
And if I may, Board Dagmar Cigar Planner. I just want to remind the board that this is for the annexation and the future land use amendment, there will be a presentation for the rezoning, and the public will have the opportunity to comment on that aspect, and I just want to make sure that there is a clarification right now, that what we're discussing right now is the annexation and the future land use amendment.
Thank you. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? I have one more question for the applicant, when we had asked you.
Yes, sir.
Why you were applying, you stated, because you have to.
Yes.
So, could you please elaborate on that?
Certainly, yes.
What is the reason why you would not want to be considered for, to be annexed into the city and different designation, well, basically the same designation, but in the city?
Well, the first, one of the reasons, and you just heard it from your staff, the current land use in Osceola County is low density residential. The current zoning on the property and surrounding us are what's designated as preceding zoning districts. Now, let me tell you what that means, that means that those preceding zoning districts are no longer compliant with the county's adopted land use, and the urban growth boundary. Those folks can stay there and live there, in their, in their homes as long as they want, but the minute they apply for any new development as defined by the code, they would be required to rezone their property to LDR, or a compliant zoning district in the county's land development code. They're not my rules, that's the rules adopted by the county. In 2014, and with that LDR, by the way, in the, in the county, it's a minimum of three dwelling units per acre, a maximum of eight. In the city, it's up to four dwelling units per acre. So that's the difference between the county and the city. Now, back in 2014, the county and the city entered in to a joint planning agreement. This joint planning agreement requires applicants that are adjacent to the city limits, to make application to the city of St. Cloud. That's what we're here for, okay? I could tell you that the property is going to yield more density, if it was developed in the county, that would be one of the reasons why my client, who by the way, I do not represent Mr. Walker or Mr. Addison, I represent the, the home dynamics, the purchaser, so I don't, I can't make any comment about previous discussions, but the property would be more valuable in the county, because it yields a higher density in accordance with the land use. In the city, it's a lower density, but that's why we're here, this joint plan. But that's why we're here, this joint planning agreement. We don't have the option. City certainly has the option. You can choose not to annex us, or the city council can. We just would hope we would have heard that about six months ago prior to making application and working, you know, through all this with your staff. You don't have to annex us. We'll stay in the county and have the higher yield. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have another question then, listening to surrounding homeowners. Is there any consideration that you all would do one-acre homes instead of four per acre, whatever you're permitted?
With the requirement, excuse me, with the requirement for water, sewer, paved roads, curb and gutter, drainage, drainage ponds, recreation, buffering, one-acre lots are not financially feasible for a developer. Now, half-acre and one-acre lots that do not require paved roads, that do not require curb and gutter, do not require improvements to the roadway network, I heard a lot of things about students and walking down the middle of the street. New development, new urban development, low-density residential will come with those type of improvements required by your code to put sidewalks on. We have no control where the school board picks up the kids and where they set their school bus stops. But we do, your code has a requirement for improvements to roadways. Could, could it be developed with one-acre lots? Not without rezoning it, you know, right now. And the issue is water and sewer. The urban growth boundary in Osceola County requires that water and sewer, public utilities, service all new development. And your CPA, or, excuse me, your JPA, requires us to annex because we're currently adjacent to city limits. So would there be consideration for one acre? I don't know, not by my client, no. It would not be financially feasible. I'm just trying to be honest.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate your honesty, you just won't be popular.
Well, I've been doing this a while and I'm not always the most popular person in the room. But I do want to point out, I'm not the developer, I'm just a land planner, okay?
Don't kill the messenger.
And I don't write the rules, I just know what they are.
You do point out an interesting conflict, though, between, you know, the county and the city, you know, and essentially, you know, by us saying no to this now means that you would go to the county, essentially.
Absolutely, yes, yes. And it would yield a higher density. I could tell you that, excuse me, although I don't have any, wow, it's a long night. Although I don't have any concept plans to show you, we have done some preliminary concept plans. And even at the R-one B zoning, which is the sixty-two-and-a-half-foot-wide lots that we requested, our density doesn't even get to three. We can't fit it all. By the time we get all the roadway improvements, all the recreation improvements, stormwater management, we're at two-point-nine dwelling units per acre. So we would actually have to go to an even smaller lot in the county to reach that minimum three dwelling unit per acre. The other thing I did want to point out, in addition to the improvements to the roadway network that's required by new development, we absolutely will be required to pave curb and gutter, drainage, sidewalks, Albany Avenue. And we have an opportunity, and this would be subject to Osceola County permitting for driveway separation access, to run a road back out to Narcoussi. So we would have a continual public loop to have another entrance, not just force everybody up to Chisholm Park Road. We have the opportunity to provide another road further south. That would be subject to, once we come in with site planning and things like that. But that's the type of improvements that come with the urban development. And I also do want to say that these rules have been in place for quite some time. The urban growth boundary, and in particular, the Narcoussi Community Plan, was adopted by Osceola County in twenty-ten. Now, that's twelve years ago. Osceola County had a big public workshop with a lot of stakeholders. It took them about a year and a half to work through that and they spent about six-hundred thousand dollars with a consultant, wasn't me. But they worked through with the community to develop these land uses, this overall concept, very similar to what you were talking about with Edgewater and these mixed-use districts. This is a Narcoussi Community Plan. That's what establishes all those land uses and then all the subsequent zoning that requires to be implemented. And again, I do want to say, to be very clear, the preceding zoning districts that they have, they can stay there as long as they want. But the minute they get, make an application for new development as defined by code, they would be required to rezone their property to what we're asking for. Or something similar to what we're asking for. So there are opportunities that come in to handle some of their concerns and questions with new development, with new urban development, with new growth, there's new improvements. And, well, I'm talking a lot, sorry.
It's okay. It was all very informative.
So, and this is just a clarification, annexation and comprehensive plan amendment because I do want to discuss the zoning.
Right, so that's all we're referring to right now, is the annexation and the comprehensive plan amendment. Does anybody else from the board have any questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but before you call anything else, I'm just, just a point of clarification for the public and just to say that, you know, I know you all have lived here a long time. I've lived here for over fifty years and lived in the same house for forty years. Sometimes it doesn't feel really good when people own a piece of property. You all don't want to be told what you can do with your piece of property. I just say, please consider that sometimes people make a decision. It doesn't always feel good, but, and the other one, statement I have to make before is, I have to say, I am a volunteer on this commission like the others. And there is no way, please never walk out of this building thinking that anybody here would stop you from coming to a meeting or an open plan. That is definitely never going to happen here. And I'm a citizen just like you all are. If there's a dodgy door, it's on record, we'll look into it. I had a little weird opening it myself today, but didn't think about it. So just making sure everybody understands that.
And I guess I'll add to that, that as we've stated before, we are an advisory board. So we advise the city council, who makes the final decision on these. And typically, there is two different hearings. I assume there will be on this as well.
Hearings, they were read out once of August.
August the eleventh and the final on September the eighth.
So it'll come before the council on August eleventh and again on September eighth, these items for the property.
Thank you. All right. So do we have any other discussion or further questions? All right. So at this time, I would like to call for a motion on approval of ordinance of the annexation, which is ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash four-two, and the comprehensive plan amendment, ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash four-three.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two-zero-two-two dash four-two based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I second it.
We have a second. This time, I'd like to call for a vote. All that approve?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes four-zero.
Thank you. We have one more item on the agenda.
Don't have to do comprehensive plan, no.
I only wanted to.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-two forty-three needs a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number two-zero-two-two dash four-three and to transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for inter-agency review based on sixteen findings within the land development code.
I second it.
All right, at this time, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote three-one in favor, passes three-one. Ms. Douglas voted nay.
At this time, I would like to read in ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash four-four, Walker Property Zoning Map Amendment, DRCK ZMA two-two dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one.
Just one moment, Board, we're having technical difficulties.
Do we need a J or something? We're just missing a slide or we're missing?
Yeah, a slide.
The whole presentation?
I mean, the whole.
Do we need a minute to, should we, if you can give a minute?
You got a paper you can print or you can click our laptop screen on the document. That's about all we can do for things without it.
Okay, because he said it would be in there.
Because it's not in there, whatever you're looking for is not all in there.
You want to use just my?
No, I can't connect this. I can take your laptop screen and put it on there. That's what we can do right now. Unless you got a piece of paper that we can print it out on because it's not in the presentation that I got.
You want, you want my, I was just going to give you the report.
Tisha, can you just, here, just take these papers and just put on this? Yeah, but you still have the information in the map, right?
I've got the report, you want to use the report and use? No, I understand, I understand, but it's in the report, it's in the report. No, not the, oh, okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, it might be advisable to take a five-minute recess to let the staff-
Yes.
-get the organization for folks to take a break. We'll go for a five-minute break, be all right?
Yes, let's vote for a five-minute recess.
adjourn for, we'll adjourn.
All in favor of a five-minute recess?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, five minutes, five minutes. It's going to be a long five minutes, it's great, it'll be a long one, a long five minutes.
All right, are we ready to call the meeting to order?
Okay, make it official so the people outside know if they want to come back.
Okay, at this time, we will resume the meeting.
Okay. All right, good evening, Council, Tisha Manning.
I'm sorry to interrupt, did we call the case?
Well, let's, we'll go ahead and call it again, just in case.
Yeah, let's call the ordinance, it's, I, agenda item O.
I think you did.
We are now reviewing ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash four-four, Walker Property Zoning Map Amendment, DRCK ZMA two-two dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, Tisha Manning, Community Development Associate Planner. Before you is a zoning map amendment for approximately twenty-five-point-five-nine acres of land. The case is known as the Walker Property. The general location is south of Chisholm Park Trail, west of South Narcoussi Road and north of Old Oak Trail. This is for ordinance number twenty-dash-two-two dash four-four. The proposed future land use is low-density residential in the, which is the same, which is consistent with the future land use of the city. So the proposed future land use of low-density residential in the county is the same as the future land use proposed for low-density residential in the city. The current zoning with the county is R-one RS-one dash, RS dash one C and AC, which is urban settlement, rural settlement and agricultural development and conservation. The proposed zoning is R-one B, single-family dwelling. And this development is, this zoning is not compatible with the surrounding area. However, it poses no adverse impacts on city facilities. It does align with the strategic plan goals of growth management. And the city has conducted review and analysis of what the applicant is proposing based upon the land development code, Division twenty-three, which is Narcoussi Community Development Intent and Standards, which was adopted May fourteenth of twenty-fifteen by ordinance number twenty-fifteen dash zero-four. So the Narcoussi area, well, the Narcoussi Community Development Intent wants the Narcoussi area to consist of mostly traditional subdivisions, rural estates, and a new proposed mixed-use district, as well as heavy-vegetated lands, wetlands and forested areas. It is essential through their, through this division that they have preservation of these natural resources, is the core community value. And these natural resources create the open space framework that helps maintain the open rural feeling of the area. Through the preservation and enhancements and creativity of these new developments, we'll establish connections with the existing neighborhoods and natural resources to reinforce character features of the Narcoussi community. So on this slide here, you'll see that some of the natural resources, of course, is Chisholm Park. And those, you know, these natural resources, they want to protect the wildlife corridors and habitats that are already existing. It increases the quality of life, provides a sustainable ecosystem, trees of pre-preservation. Some of the things that they want to incorporate to help keep those things, as well as to help foster new development, is to create other off-street transportation options, you know, connected multiple, multi-use trail system. They want to do things such as detached sidewalks and, you know, other mobility options that support hikers, bicycles, as well as the equestrians. Under the same land development code, Division twenty-three, they propose things such as separators to connect. And those separators to connect will use like the natural buffers for different developments to bring them together. So you may have a traditional development that butts up to, you know, a development of more rural estates and they want to use buffers to kind of bring those together. Or utilize some of the, the actual, you know, just natural buffers that are still there. Just don't tear down the trees, don't, don't use the waterways and things. Just don't tear down the trees, don't, don't, um, use the waterways and things that are still there. They also want to, you know, try to connect the neighborhoods using streets and trails, as well as a lot of green space. So, to promote land use solutions and similarities at the edge of development is something that's really, um, honed in on through the Division twenty-three of the Land Development Code. During the review and analysis, we also utilized the Envision St. Cloud Plan, which is the St. Cloud Citywide Master Plan, which was adopted January eleventh of twenty-eighteen by Resolution twenty-eighteen dash zero-two-one-R. The Envision St. Cloud Plan is a master plan representing a community's aspirations to be a strong, livable town that embraces its downtown and lakefront through growth and reinforces the positive town and country qualities of community character. So, some of the key visions of the Envision St. Cloud Plan is to balance community character and growth, celebrate, celebrate parks, lakes, and open spaces, improve connectivity for all modes of travel, respect the rural line, preserve rural neighborhoods, and new neighborhoods at the rural edge. So, those were some of the things that were identified in the plan. With the Envision St. Cloud Plan, they went out, they spoke to citizens, they identified target areas. It was just a lot of citizen input as far as how they want the city of St. Cloud to live, I mean, I'm sorry, to develop and to grow. So, some neighborhoods were identified as livable suburbs. The area in question for development is part of that livable suburb, and you can see it here where, um, I tried to circle to identify. It is part of the livable, livable suburb, but it's also right adjacent to the rural line that was established by the Envision St. Cloud Plan, as well as you can't really see it on here, but it abuts a rural neighborhood that Envision St. Cloud identified as remaining a rural neighborhood. So, um, something else that the Envision St. Cloud did was they came up with, you know, a design of what they want these new neighborhoods at the rural edge to look like. So, um, of course, those neighborhoods are going to preserve a significant amount of undeveloped open space. So, the city in the land development code, we require that all new developments have open space. You know, you guys hear before you a lot of times that they can amenitize those open spaces and they can do things. Well, under the Envision St. Cloud Plan of the, um, developments at the rural edge, they want undeveloped open space. So, basically, they want you to preserve the natural buffer that's already there. Not, you know, tear down, not tear down the trees and then fill other trees. It also wants, you know, access to lakes and other natural resources that's going to provide, you know, alternate modes of transportation such as bike, walking, um, to and from these home sites. Also, as far as some usable open space in the form of passive parks, greens, or community gardens. Again, it talks about the off-road multi-use trails provided throughout the neighborhood that is eventually going to be linked to the regional trail system. So, we do have the Center Lake Ranch property that is coming about, and I am not the project manager on that, but just some of the things that they are considering is trail systems that's going to help connect to the regional trail system as well. So, staff has done a lot of, um, research and analysis in its recommendation. So, for our recommendation, we do recommend the now of the R-one-B zoning, because we do not feel it would fit with the character of the neighborhood. It does not, um, uh, fit with the character of the Envision St. Cloud Plan or the Narcoussi, um, intent and standards of development through the Land Development Code. Staff does support the recommendation of approval for an R-one zoning, and this is for ordinance two-zero-two-two dash forty-four. Staff is available for questions as well as the applicant, thank you.
Could you please clarify the, uh, difference between R-one-B and R-one?
Yes, so, R-one-B, um, is a minimum site area for, to develop a home of seventy-five hundred square feet. The minimum site area to develop a home under R-one is ten thousand square feet. So, of course, you know, if you take less area to develop a home, as well as, um, R-one has greater lot width. The minimum lot width for R-one, I believe, is? Nope, that's from R-one-B, R-one-B minimum site area is seventy-five hundred with a sixty-two point five lot width. R-one, it is ten thousand with, uh, I believe it's a hundred-foot lot width, but let me verify, but, um, so, seventy-five foot lot width, thank you. With a seventy-five foot lot width, so it is a, a difference of about twenty-five hundred as far as square feet in site area.
And approximately how many houses would that be then, on twenty-nine acres, with all of that other development of streets and roads and trails, and, I mean, how many houses are we talking on twenty-nine acres?
Um, just rough estimate, because again, I don't think the applicant has, you know, really come up with any type of conceptual plan. So, just really rough, just looking at, you know, just the base numbers, um, not taking into consideration roads, streets, or any of that. You're looking at a difference of about maybe twenty to thirty homes.
Going to the R-one would mean that we have?
R-one, R-one means they have less homes.
You've been dying to say something about zoning, so go for it.
Okay, so how does this tie into your? The people you represent?
Yes.
How does this tie into their plan, is it good or bad, or indifferent?
Well, we disagree with staff's recommendation. Mr. Adams, I'm sorry, just go ahead and restate. I'm sorry, yes, you're, you're correct, yes, John Adams, RJ Whittenn Associates.
Thank you.
Three-sixteen Church Street, Kissimmee, Florida. For the record, we are the planners for the project, uh, representing the applicant. We disagree with staff's recommendation, we request that you approve, uh, the request that we made at, um, R-one-B, and there's a couple of reasons. First of all, I was not aware that the Envision St. Cloud Plan was actually adopted. But what is adopted is your joint planning agreement, and I just want to bring your attention to Article Five of the Joint Planning Agreement. And, uh, first sentence reads, "The county has adopted a small-area master plan for the Narcoussi community and has adopted a community redevelopment area for a portion of US Highway one-ninety-two." Second sentence, "Within two years of the effective date of this agreement, the city agrees to process amendments to its land development code to implement the adopted Narcoussi plan with substantially the same content as outlined in the master plan and the land development code adopted by the county." There is absolutely no way your Envision St. Cloud Plan, that talks about rural edges, that talks about all these other design guidelines, is in compliance with the Narcoussi community plan. That's also part of your land development code, and you're obligated to enforce it based on this joint planning agreement. There is no rural land use in Narcoussi with the exception of the Rural Enclave on Starline Drive, which is over on the east side of Narcoussi Road. When staff gives a recommendation about us providing a transition from what? Chisholm Park is not a rural land use, Chisholm Park is a civic, regional park. The difference, to answer your question earlier, between R-one-B and R-one is the difference between six, two-and-a-half-foot wide lots and seventy-five-foot wide lots. Yes, we get less units with seventy-five-foot wide lots. But also, the unintended consequence that I don't think staff is considering is it creates less opportunity for us to create those perimeter buffers that you heard our neighbors talking about. Because we have to put it inside lots now, bigger lots. We would request the R-one-B, we would request to be found in compliance with the Narcoussi community plan, and I'm actually going to be talking to legal, city's legal counsel about the inconsistencies between your Envision St. Cloud Plan and the Narcoussi community plan and the provisions of Article Five of your JPA, because I believe there's inconsistencies which create a legal conflict. So, uh, once again, difference is two-point-nine dwelling units per acre at R-one-B. On twenty-five acres, we're looking at somewhere around seventy units. Two-point-one dwelling units per acre. Now, that's not a typical number, that's based on some preliminary conceptual plans that we've created. Yes, less units and less opportunity to create some perimeter buffers and to enhance some open space opportunities. That's the unintended consequence of a larger lot. Okay?
Does the Narcoussi comprehensive, or plan, um, when you're annexed into the city, it still applies?
In accordance with Article Five, the city had the responsibility to revise its comp plan and code to implement the adopted Narcoussi community plan. Yes.
So regardless of whether or not you're county or city, it applies, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is substantially in compliance. Within two years of the effective date, the city agrees to process amendments to its land development code to implement the adopted Narcoussi plan with substantially the same content as outlined. In Narcoussi, low-density residential is three dwelling units per acre. We're at two-point-nine with the zoning requested, I think that could be argued to be substantially in compliance. The two-point-one is not with the R-one that, that your staff is recommending. So, it's, it was the city's obligation to amend their code and their comp plan to enforce the county's adopted Narcoussi community plan.
My question, my first question would be, is there a way to postpone this until we, they, they do have some conversation?
Conversation move.
Asking, would, would that be some?
Ask me that again, I'm sorry.
Would, would it be better for, uh, the commission to wait until that was looked at by legal before we make any recommendations?
No, I, I think that the, the question before you tonight, from a recommendation standpoint, is simply whether you think that R-one-B, as proposed by the applicant, is satisfactory under the sixteen criteria in your land development code? Or whether you have feelings more consistent with what staff has presented?
I'm, I have to say that I'm conflicted, because I want there to be more green area, more whatever, so I'm find this a difficult decision.
And that's understood, and that is the unintended consequence of, okay, bigger lots, well, there's less opportunity for green space. You know, and it's less units, but we're not talking about a significant amount of units, and roadway improvements and everything else are going to be required, no matter what gets built. But I can tell you that to make it financially feasible and to allow my client, allow me as a planner, to design some enhanced, especially after hearing some of our neighbors, some enhanced buffering techniques, I don't want to eat it up in somebody's yard, I want to, I want to put it for a community amenity, so. And if we reduce the density too low, this development won't happen, something else will.
I have a question for the lawyer. Yeah, I'm asking it wrong, but here it goes. What has more water, the JPA or the St. Cloud Envision? Envision St. Cloud? Like, what are we supposed to be following?
Between water, you mean?
Between the JPA?
The joint plan agreement?
Or the Envision St. Cloud.
Why, you think that there's a, I don't understand?
No, from a legal perspective.
As planners, should we be considering?
No, I don't think, I don't think you're going to weigh one versus the other. Uh, the, the question, Mr. Adams is raising a question about whether or not the city, if I heard correctly, whether the city has properly updated codes or comp plans to run consistent with the Narcoussi plan and the, I guess, elements of the JPA? If, if I understood what you're saying? Yes, sir. I haven't had a conversation with the city attorney about that, but I don't think that you're, I think the commission's in a position to, to weigh tonight which of, which of any agreement is the one that's more guiding. I think what you want to do tonight is simply guide your decision based upon the presentations and the sixteen criteria to what's being asked for by the applicant, whether you agree that that's a suitable, uh, zoning allocation for what's being sought, or whether you, you feel that the staff's position is more, uh, you know, attractive and/or an alternate position. But at the end of the day, the applicant has the right to ask and apply for what they're asking for, and your job is to make a recommendation to council, either to approve that or to not approve that, and give them the feedback that they, they can benefit from. But I don't, I don't think you're in a position to have to determine which agreement need be followed. I don't think that, I wouldn't rely on that.
I would like to ask the staff, if they wouldn't mind, to elaborate a little bit on some pros and cons of R-one versus R-one-B. I mean, I know you, you did discuss the comprehensive plan and, you know, the urban, you know, the, the buffers at the urban growth boundary and that sort of thing, but could you elaborate a little bit more on, um, maybe the benefit of the R-one? I mean, obviously, we've heard, uh, that the benefit to R-one-B is, you know, allowing some more space for buffers and that sort of thing between the existing properties and the proposed.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. Uh, I just want to clarify, first of all, the city did adopt the Narcoussi overlay from the county, word by word. The same overlay that is in the county has been adopted since, since two thousand fifteen by the city. Regardless of what the Envision St. Cloud, the Envision St. Cloud might not be in accordance to the Narcoussi overlay. And based on the information that Mr. Adam provided about the language on the JPA, it might be perceived that the Envision St. Cloud is not along those lines. But if we take out even the, uh, the Envision St. Cloud, the analysis, we, we also made the analysis based on the Narcoussi community development. And it does not meet the char, the character of the area, because the Narcoussi also talks about preservation of land and enhancements of development and connection and preservation of the nat, the natural resources. So, our basis, regardless of the Envision St. Cloud, is still not, we don't consider that is, the request is being in compliance with the Narcoussi overlay and the character of the Narcoussi overlay, and what it's trying to achieve in the Narcoussi overlay, if you can put it?
And when you say overlay, you're, you're speaking of the?
I'm sorry, the community.
Community development intent and standards, right?
Yeah, it's just that we call it overlay.
That's fine, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
That, the community development, uh, standards, yes. And, because it talks about the preservation of land, it talks about the, uh, quality of life, try, doing, uh, transportation options. I, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Adam when he said that small, uh, bigger lots would not create buffers. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that statement, because the setbacks are greater on R-one, so the, the, the buffers are going to be naturally created. There is no requirement by the county, by the, by the city that will require residential against residential. So, that, that perceived perimeter buffer doesn't really exist, because we're talking about residential against residential. The only bu, natural buffer that we could maybe achieve is with bigger lots, because of the, their greater setbacks.
Thank you for that description, uh, I, well, I do have one more question for the city staff.
Just one point of order, Mr. Chair. I think when we're talking about, when I was talking about buffers, I was talking about common buffer tracks. I wasn't talking about a bigger yard and a bigger setback.
Could you clarify a little bit what you're talking about?
Dagmarie mentioned that the R-one has larger setbacks for the larger lots, and that creates a buffer. No, it's somebody's backyard, there's no guarantee it's going to be a buffer. If we incorporate community buffers and put them in tracks, responsibility maintenance of the HOA, then we won't have individual property owners cutting trees down, cutting shrubs down, putting, I don't know, playground equipment in their backyard, it wouldn't be private property. So, there's a difference between bigger yard setbacks and buffers. And I was talking about the buffers. And I was talking about the buffers, the opportunity to create the buffers in a community maintenance, not somebody's backyard.
Is this approved design, then, where there's going to be buffers?
Well, this is something that we would have to come in, in a subsequent application when we show a site plan. And, I don't know, we could even fashion some special conditions that we could volunteer, because I'm not sure you're allowed to condition a straight zoning, but we could volunteer conditions about some perimeter buffering, and we'd be happy to work with staff to do that as well, and our neighbors.
Thank you. The question I had for city staff was about design standards. And what, if any, design standards would be in place for something like a buffer? Or, you know, I mean, when we talk about design standards, are we only talking about, you know, form of the structure and, you know, things like, I know we had reviewed recently the driveway widths, you know, at the property line, at the street, and that sort of thing? What other design standards would be reviewed or put in place? There was one item on here, I think I lost it, but it was talking about design standards that would be reviewed or put in place at the time of application for the master plan.
So when we're talking about the design standards for the Narcoussi community plan, it's a character look. It's a character to preserve the rural look of the area. So when he's talking about the designs, he's talking about, there are areas that are considered commercial in this overlay as well. So they have a specific look of country. So those design standards are separate from the residential. The residential also have some characteristic in regards to fences, in regards to, to make it look more of a country feel and a country rural feel. So those will be the standards that will be in place at the time of the design of the subdivision. And as Mr. Adam indicated, those things will be implemented with his planning and subdivision plan and his subdivision construction plan. And the creation of those open areas. In regards to how those tracks, buffer tracks would look like, there is, like I said, there is no requirement from the code that would require actual buffers. Yes, the creation of tracks for that intent can, could be achieved, but we are limited to what the land development code allows us in regards to the zoning and what it allows us with the Narcoussi overlay. I think they have, we have a slide that talks about separators. That's the, that's separators that uses the features of the natural resources, and they are to connect the neighborhoods. So we could utilize some of those standards with creating some of the tracks for the buffer, landscape buffers, as Mr. Adam indicated, if that's the wish of the board. We feel that the small lots, as you heard the community speak, did not fit in the character of the Narcoussi. That's why our recommendation that we have some tools that we could implement to create that visual enhancement and rural feel within this particular community. If the applicant is perceptive to receive those recommendations, we could work with the applicant and create something that meets the intent.
So can we go back to one of the maps, future land use maps? And I'm looking at number seven, "The proposed change will adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood." And then the second paragraph, it says, "The east property boundary abuts the rural line established in the Envision St. Cloud plan. Rural line was formed to help decrease urban sprawl. New neighborhoods developed, the new rural line should serve as a buffer between urban and rural developments." So we're talking about the east portion, the east property boundary, which is near Narcoussi Road. Is that right, from my recollection?
So, Tisha Manning, Associate Planner. So it's very hard to tell on this slide, but the east property boundary is more toward the Narcoussi Road area. However, there is a very small, and I believe one of the citizens talked about it, that buffers up against that road.
Okay.
And this reminded me, another point of, that I need to clarify. The county adopted the urban growth. The city didn't. So when Mr. Adam is talking about the urban growth boundary, that was something that it was adopted by the county. The city didn't adopt that. That there is an argument in regards to what the JPA talks about when it refers to the urban growth boundary and the adopted Envision St. Cloud, that's for the attorneys to figure it out. But just to make clear, the county adopted the urban growth boundary.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Call for public comment as well.
Yes. So at this time, we will allow for public comment. Does anyone, do we have any public comment? Anyone? All right. If nobody has any public comments, we will close the public comment session. Anybody else on the Planning Commission Board have any other discussion, recommendations? Okay. If we have no more discussion, at this time, I would like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, let me make sure I'm at the right, recommend approval of ordinance 2022-44, based on the 16 findings within the land development code, for the R-1B zoning district designation.
Well, the...
That was the one that was offered, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right. I'm just being specific, so you know what I mean.
The motion is properly stated, so it's now ripe for a second, if there is one.
Your motion is for 1B, correct?
Correct.
Which is what the applicant is seeking.
The city's recommendation is, just to clarify, is recommends R-1.
Well, technically, the city's recommendation was to deny R-1B, and they did make a recommendation for R-1. But the applicant is, has the power to frame the discussion, and the applicant is seeking R-1B. And the motion, which has been seconded by Dr. Rivera, is to approve the applicant's request for the, recommend approval for the R-1B based on the 16 criteria in the land development code, and that was seconded by Dr. Rivera. So now it's proper for discussion amongst the commission? Or even another motion? But the motions are voted on in the order in which they are seconded. So this motion, which has been seconded, will be the first to be voted on. So, just Robert's rules of procedure, so, okay.
All right, so now that we have a second, we'll call for a vote. All that approve?
Sure, I'll take a discussion on that.
Okay, let's hear it.
I was feeling like you were saying that, I didn't mean to push you, but it was just, I'm going, I'm going based on trust that the actual construction and the boundaries and the things that we talked about and what I heard, what I hope people talk with the community about will be built in there, and it gives him the ability to do it. I feel like going to the R-1 removes that ability for him to do it. I'm going on faith and trust. That's why I recommend it.
I'm inclined to trust the city's recommendation in this instance, but that's my opinion. I guess, you know, the reason I look at it that way is because I have reviewed the future land use conceptual master plan, and I agree with, you know, less density, if you will, at the urban growth boundary, even though this, in this instance, you know, is kind of not exactly that, but, you know, we're still looking at the edge of what we call the city, essentially, at this time. And, I don't know, I feel that with the smaller, or I'm sorry, larger lot sizes requirement, I think that it will require the applicant and who they represent to sort of think outside the box a little bit more and, you know, create something that would be more appropriate.
I don't disagree, it's just that if you think of some of the examples, the bigger lot, the person who owns the lot, just like we said, if you own the property, you get to do what you want to do with it.
But with no plan out there yet, there's no real guarantee that they won't just go ahead and put an extra 20, 30 houses in there, because they can. So, I mean, I like the fact that you trust them, but that doesn't mean that's really what they're going to do, because they haven't actually designed it yet. So with the smaller lots, they could just add an extra 30 houses, and we still just end up with a lot of houses.
We don't know, at this time, we don't really know the exact...
It's not designed yet. It's not designed yet. All we're doing is talking about the zoning here, but we leave it wide open for them to put a bunch of houses up in there, you know.
We also don't know the exact lay of the land exactly. I mean, you know, there's maybe things there that exist that the EPA may be interested in, you know, areas that they can't develop on for whatever reason, you know, trees, you know, natural features, that sort of thing. So, in my opinion, I think it's safer to agree, you know, side with the city on this.
If that's the case, then the bigger lots are going to be even more difficult for them to put the green space in. Right?
Yes, that's correct. I think we're just looking at it differently, but, and that's okay.
And if they were going to do more houses, they would never have asked for annexation, right? They would have stayed in the county and had an opportunity.
Well, remember, they had the extra annexation, because they had to.
Right, right.
They were required to, so, because of the adjacency to Chisholm Park.
But it could have been denied. All right, no.
Okay.
Call for question.
So...
Motion was to approve applicant's request for zoning amendment to R-1B, based on the 16 criteria land development code. Motion was seconded by Dr. Rivera.
All right. So now that the motion is seconded, we will call for a vote. All those that approve?
Aye.
Aye.
And do not approve?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it's 2-2, so it's a, it's not approved. It's, the recommendation will go on to the city councils, it was deadlock at 2-2.
They get paid the big bucks.
With the feedback from the commission. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Light?
Next planning commission will be August 16th, and I will be sending out some information to those of you who signed up for the workshop. I'll need you to complete a W-9, and I'll send that out, so you guys can get that completed. And I'm not sure if you, did you want to attend the workshop on September 6?
I think it's on the 6th, yeah.
September 6?
It's in Orlando. But you can think about it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to remind you, just let me know as soon as possible. And then the training is due July 31st for the Plan Edison.
That's the one we're doing online, man.
Yes, ma'am. And that's it. You have to contact Plan Edison for that.
Can I add something for the, for information for the board?
Yes, please.
The city, the city council is going to be holding a workshop on Thursday, and we're going to be talking about the strategic plan with annexations for the city and the priorities, what areas are going to be priorities to be annexing to the city. I was communicated to invite the board. It would be highly informative in regards to, because there was a lot of questions about how is this benefit annexing this area? And those questions will be answered, how economically feasible the annexation of some areas are going to be more than the other ones. And we're going to be presenting the strategic plan for the annexation if we, if the council agrees to amend the JPA. And all the other stuff that we're going to be addressing in the JPA and tighten things up.
What time is that at on Thursday?
I believe that starts at 3:00 p.m. here.
3:00 p.m.
Yeah, 3:00 p.m. here. I think it's going to be recorded, and also, we can make the presentation available to you.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. I don't think I can make that.
Can we just show up if we can be here, or do we need to let you know ahead of time?
No, no, you can show up. Yeah, yeah, it's open, it's open to the public. Directors and deputy directors are mandated to attend, and we were told, so the planners, so we have the choice. But we really encourage the board to participate and attend.
I do have a request from Ms. Light. Could you, I don't know if it's in the files already, but I would like to have the Narcoussi community development intent and standards, if we could be able to review that? Because I have a feeling where it's going to come up again in the future, and I'd like to be more familiar with it.
Yeah, we can, we can send him, send the ordinance when we adopt it.
Do we need to officially adjourn, or am we good?
You guys want to adjourn?
All right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. You're not allowed to make a motion. I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Somebody move to adjourn.